I guess Chris. This is a no-brainer. Yeah, yeah, there were people here last time, but I don't know what their complaints are, but... Is the light on or not? I can't tell.
Yes, it's on.
Yeah.
Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the zoning board of adjustment, January 24, 2017 meeting. The notice requirements of the law have been satisfied. Notices have been sent by certified mail to the Home News Tribune. Receipts are on file in the township's clerk's office. We ask anyone that has a cellphone in the audience to please turn it off during the meeting. All variances granted tonight will expire if the building permit, zoning permit, or occupancy permit is not applied for within one year of the granting of the variance. No new applications will begin after 10:00 PM, and the meeting will adjourn at 11:00 PM. Any application may be discussed at the next agenda meeting. Can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Voe?
Here.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Farhat?
Here.
Mr. Paul Castro?
Excuse me.
Mr. Young?
Ms. Malvo?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Shadid?
Here.
Mr. McGrath?
Here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lawrence Sacks. I'm the attorney for the zoning board of adjustment. I'm going to commence the reorganization meeting, and once we appoint a chairman for 2017, we'll turn that gavel over to the chairman. First of all, can I have a motion to adjourn the 2016 board?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the 2016 board is now adjourned. Can I now accept a motion to appoint a chairman for the zoning board of adjustment for the 2017 year?
Mr. Sacks, I would move to appoint Mr. McGrath as chairman.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, let's have a roll call on that, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malvo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Shadid?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes. Mr. McGrath, congratulations. Meeting is yours. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion for the vice chairman, please?
Mr. McGrath, I would move to nominate Mr. Shadid as vice chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Yep, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malvo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes. And finally, folks, I realize you're sitting here waiting. We have a little bit of year-end business we have to deal with. Please indulge us for a few more minutes. We have a few things we have to get on the record for this meeting. We all received a copy of our zoning board adjustment annual report from 2016. Do we have a motion to accept those, that report?
Motion to accept the report.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We should have a roll call.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malvo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes. And finally, folks, I realize you're sitting here waiting. We have a little bit of year-end business we have to deal with. Please indulge us for a few more minutes. We have a few things we have to get on the record for this meeting. We all received a copy of our zoning board adjustment annual report from 2016. Do we have a motion to accept those, that report?
Motion to accept the report.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We should have a roll call.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malvo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Shadid?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes. Second on this list, we need to, we all received a copy of the bylaws, the zoning board adjustment bylaws 2017. Do we have a motion to accept those bylaws as we receive them?
I would move to accept the bylaws, Mr. Chair. Additionally, I would like to speak a little bit about requiring a court reporter to appear on use variance applications. I know we had discussed that in the past, and I know we were going to ask the governing body to adopt that type of ordinance. I would ask that we at least form a memo to the governing body requesting that a court reporter be required on those types of situations.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we amended our bylaws?
Yeah, we required.
Yeah, we did, Mr. Voe. It is now required. It's now required.
Do we have a court reporter here this evening?
No, I believe this application was due complete in 2016.
Fired to that.
And we accepted jurisdiction in 2016.
Okay.
So moving forward. So this may be the last use variance application without a court reporter.
Without, yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malvo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes. Thirdly, we need a motion for professional services agreement. We have a motion to accept someone for our legal counsel?
I would move, Mr. Chair, to appoint Mr. Sacks as our counsel.
We have a motion for Lawrence Sacks?
Second.
Second, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malvo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for that nomination, and I look forward to serving you and assisting this board in any capacity, any legal capacity I can, so I look forward to this year. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. And we, finally, we need a motion for our professional services agreement. Do we have a motion for that for 2017?
I would move, Mr. Chair, to appoint Delaware Rarine Engineering Incorporated as our engineer.
Sounds good. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malvo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes. Thank you. Lots and lots of hours, folks, that go into allowing us to have a five-minute section of our meeting to get that done. So we appreciate that, your indulgence during that time. So now we're going to move to our lower meeting. There are several carried applications from last year, that is why the one that is use variance in this meeting survives without the need for a court reporter. But we're going to move, in the interest of time, more directly to the Joseph Prince of Allen application, that is Woodland Avenue and Roseland Place. That's regarding Block 178, Block 3. It is requiring bulk variances to construct a single-family residence fronting Roseland Place on an undersized lot. This is an R4, single-family residential zoning district.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Peter Wagner. I'm here as an of counsel for Richard Louisville LLC, representing the petitioner, Joseph Prince of Allen. This application concerns a request for bulk variances to construct a single-family residence at the corner of Woodland Avenue and Roseland Place, also known as Block 178, Block 3, on the north端 of Paxman. The property is owned R4, just a single-family residential. Legal notice, the application was published in the Home News Tribune on November 23, 2016, and legal notices were sent to all property owners within 200 feet of the property by certified mail on November 30, 2016. Certified receipts were delivered to the board secretary on Friday, December 9, 2016. This petition was originally scheduled to be heard by the board on December 13, 2016. The matter, along with the notice, was carried to today. As the plot plan submitted with the application indicates, the proposed structure has a footprint of 50 feet fronting Woodland Avenue by 20 feet fronting Roseland Place. We are requesting variances pertaining to the minimum lot requirements of Article 2, Section 203-4A, specifically the total area of the lot, which is only, which is 5,000 square feet instead of 9,000, the width of the lot, which is only 50 feet instead of 90, and the front yard depth fronting Woodland Avenue, which is 23 and 1/2 feet instead of 30 feet, as required by the court. I have two witnesses to present to the board this evening. The first is Mr. Paul Ricky, who is a licensed professional planner and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. The second is the applicant, Mr. Prince of Allen, who I'll just have testify briefly on one point. So I'd like to call Mr. Ricky.
Mr. Ricky, thank you. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, all the evidence.
I do.
Please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation for the record.
It's Paul Ricky, R-I-C-C-I. I'm a sole proprietor. I operate at Ricky Planning LLC.
We accept your counsel. Do you want a more dear, more, more kidding? I know Mr. Ricky has testified here on numerous occasions, so if you offer him as a professional planner, that's fine.
I can tell, we accept your call. Will you permit me to stand here or at the table?
It's up to you. If you're going to move, you're probably, we need to use this microphone, so I will offer you the choice.
Okay. If I may, I do have a handout I'd like to share with the board.
Counselor, I'm going to mark this A1. I need your permission for that.
Thank you.
I'll mark A1, which I guess is page 1, and I'll mark A2, which is page 2.
If I may qualify the exhibit, it is entitled Exhibit 1, existing conditions, Woodland Avenue and Roseland Place, North Brunswick, New Jersey. The first sheet contains an aerial photograph. This exhibit was prepared in a geographic information system, that is a system where an aerial and your tax maps are geo-referenced in real-time coordinates, so it's to scale. There are two lines, and I'll talk about this more in a moment, or two buffers. The yellow signifies a 200-foot buffer from the subject property. The blue shows a 300-foot buffer. And I was also able to take our plan and geo-reference the house on the subject property, so it shows the approximate, very close to being the exact size of the home, so the board can get a feel for how the proposed property would look in comparison to the other homes in the area. And then on the second page, it consists of four pictures, two of the subject property and two pictures of surrounding properties. As the board is aware, the property is located in your R4 zone. Your R4 zone anticipates interior lots that are 75 feet wide by 7/2 by 100, which creates a 7,500-foot lot, but corner lots that are 9,000 square feet, 90 feet wide by 100 feet in depth. The subject property is, as stated, it's 50 by 100, it's 5,000 square feet in area. It was planted in approximately 2003. I'm not aware of whether variances were granted at that time for the creation of that lot. I have to assume that they were, however, it's a fairly recent planting of a lot that occurred in the township. We're going to be requesting the variances under both the C1 hardship and C2 balancing provisions. And as I get started, I'm going to talk about some more of the information on the aerial sheet, I'm going to come back to that, but just quickly to show the board members the existing property located at the intersection of Woodland Avenue and Roseland Place, existing 50, as I said, 50 by 100-foot lot. The zoning requirements are, it requires on a corner lot, 30-foot front yards on each roadway frontage, a 20-foot rear yard, and a 6-foot side yard. The variances that we're pressing for the undersized lot, for not meeting the front yard setback on Woodland Avenue, receiving 20 feet, 25 feet, or 30 feet is required, and for not meeting the requisite lot width of 90 feet where 50 feet exists. I will provide testimony that that front yard variance, in my opinion, may not be necessary due to the established setbacks within 200 feet of the property, and I'll discuss that later in the moment. And picture number three shows the existing house on the joint lot 3. You can see that's largely a one-and-a-half-story residence. Picture number four shows, we're looking generally in the west-sawy direction here, and it shows some of the larger houses in the area, again, largely one-story residence. If you look in picture 1, in the background, you can see that the homes in the opposite direction are one-story residents as well. And we did submit architectural plans as part of the submissions. The board have copies of those? Now, I'll touch upon that as well, but we're proposing a home, not a two-story home, but a one-and-a-half-story modest home, something that we think that will fit nicely into the character of this area. For otherwise lot cases, what the case law suggests is that we should demonstrate certain points as part of the proofs. Look, with all applications, we're required to meet the positive and negative criteria. We need to demonstrate that efforts were made to bring the property into conformity with the zone. If you look at the area, clearly the subject property outlined in yellow, the lot that's nearly to our west, you can see that the, if you look at the bottom, the north is actually moving in the right direction based on the key. The property to our west, excuse me, property to our south, Lot 2, that's a 5,000-square-foot lot, so additional lands could not be acquired to bring our property into conformity. And then looking in the east-sawy direction, Lot 4, that is an oversized lot for the zone. It's 10,000 square feet for that lot, 7,500 square foot will be required. However, to bring our lot into conformity would bring Lot 4 into non-conformity. Also, I would note that it would create an L-shaped lot, it would create an irregular-shaped lot, and in my opinion, even adding a marginal amount of additional land would really not benefit the neighborhood or the community due to unusual plating of a lot that would be created as a result. A point, the next point in the proofs, submit detailed plans of the proposed house, which describe its appearance and prove its compliance with building terms. And we did submit architectural plans. I just mentioned those, and I'm not sure if the board, we didn't bring a mountain set, I don't believe. I wasn't sure if our architect was going to be here, but I do have a set, and I apologize for not having it around.
If you're here in reference to this application, you are entitled to see these plans, so I'm going to ask your cooperation in that process, because obviously it will be needing to be moved around. So if I could ask you to put those plans at that table, please. And then if you are interested in seeing, look, this is, is a drawing of the proposed residence for that house, for that property, okay? If you would like to, without coming across the front, if you could make your way around the back and look at those plans, please do so quietly, because we want to be able to continue the application. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. And what the plans demonstrate, that the applicant is proposing a modest-sized house that is 1.5 stories, it's a home that's similar in character, in my view, the area of a good amount of one-and-a-half-story caves and...
Could you put it to layman's terms, one-and-a-half stories? It's certainly not a 4-foot second floor.
I'm calling it one-and-a-half stories because a one-story home is, would be traditionally referenced as having a flat roof. Here we have a pitched roof, which would be considered a half-story under the ordinance, in my opinion, further from Mr. Paetti in that regard. However, traditionally, a house with a pitched roof is commonly referred to as a one-and-a-half story home.
That half-story that it refers to would be, would be an inhabitable, basically, half a story. So in essence, you have, it's a one-story. So one-story inhabitable. Storage above or something, whatever you want to put up there, right? So it is not inhabitable on that half-story. Right, that couldn't be a living quarters, right? Or a bedroom or anything like that. Thank you for the clarification.
Essentially, it's the basement and the north, correct?
Yeah, is there a basement plan? There is a basement.
There is a basement plan. I would refer the applicant on how that may be utilized, but there is a basement.
Okay, yeah. It's not living space.
And the proofs continues, say, attempt to let the applicant demonstrate compliance with the use of side yard and setback requirements. As I already mentioned, we adhere to your rear yard, your side yard, and your front yard setback on Roseland Place. The issue and contention is whether we adhere to the Woodland Avenue front yard setback. Again, front yards are required, 30 feet along Woodland, 30 feet along Roseland, 20 feet the opposite of Roseland, and 6 feet for the remaining yard. Your ordinance also, under Section 205, 25.1, allows the applicant to reduce the front yard setback with the prevailing front yard setback within 200 feet of the property. In yellow, you can see the buffer from the property. That indicates a 200-foot buffer. And as I indicated, this is, I conducted some measurements within a geographic information system to estimate the front yard setbacks in the area, and I have to disqualify that in terms of these aren't exact survey shots of the front yards, but you're going to find, I believe, and based on your, just your review of the aerial, that my testimony will be largely accurate, and there is a fairly large fudge factor that you're going to find as part of my testimony as well. And as you look in the aerial, if you see the numbers, for example, 178.3 in the subject property, that is the block and lot. So 170, Block 170, 178.4, I estimate the front yard setback to be 14.6 feet. 178.5 at 12.7 feet. 178.6 at 17.3 feet. And then moving in the yellow west-sawy direction, 118.70, I found it to be just under 30, but I calculated at 30 feet, and 118.6, again, moving in the west-sawy direction, at 28 feet. If you average those setbacks, it will give an average setback of 20.52 feet. We're proposing a setback of 23.5 feet. So due to the high margin of the averaging of compliance, that 3-feet difference per se, I don't believe that a front yard variance is required for the Woodland Ave frontage.
Mr. Ritchie, can I just ask you a quick question? Yes. On Block 178, Lot 1, two properties down on Roseland Place, that, is that a detached garage there? It appears that it's not only on the property line, but possibly exceeds the property line?
I don't...
Mike, you took a 178, Lot 1? Yeah, 178.1 is also a corner lot, 5,000.
I'm trying to recall, when I was out there, I don't have a picture that was in my file.
Sure looks it though. That's the thing it is, is that timeline?
I believe it is, but I just don't recall. You see, I took the pictures about a month or so ago in the snow. I don't recall that exact property.
Yeah. That's okay. I'm just trying to clarify what the aerial represents, that's all.
Well, I think, is it fair to say that most of the homes in the area are on 5,000-square-feet lots? And I have some testimony to that as well. And maybe I'll skip ahead to that testimony if it's appropriate. Can we, can you continue on with respect to your argument dealing with Woodland Avenue and whether, whether variances would be required for the front yard setback? Well, based on, based on my drawing of estimating those front yard setbacks, it appears that the average is close to 20.52 feet within 200 feet of the subject property where 23.5 feet is proposed. I believe that, I mean, it's a large enough of an error or fudge factor based on the fact that I don't have an actual survey shooting of that property to demonstrate that we're in compliance in that regard. The ordinance requires 30 feet, though, correct? 30 feet. And you're, and you're providing 23.5? However, the ordinance says you're allowed to average... I understand. You understand. Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, let me just briefly speak. Because this, I had a conversation with Mr. Ritchie today, and this really wasn't contemplated before today, or offered to me before today, but we do have what's called a prevailing front yard setback exception in town. And what the exception is, if within 200 feet of either side of the property, the prevailing setbacks are, whatever they are, if they're only 20 feet back, then you can construct the dwelling at 20 feet back, even though it's not in compliance with the 30-foot required in the zone.
Well, it would be logical in terms of fitting in with the character of the neighborhood also.
Exactly, that's what it's called.
It would make sense.
Now, here's the thing, and as he just explained, he's showing us an aerial drawing, and if you look at the aerial drawing, and you line yourself up, you say to yourself, Woodland Avenue, you know, going to the terminus of Woodland, going toward, you know, the school property in that direction, yeah, guess what? It looks like all the homes there are 20 feet or less. So he looks like he's even set back more than that. You jump on the other side of Woodland Avenue, and you look at Block 7, Block 118, Lot 7, and then you scratch your head a little bit and say, I wonder what that setback is, just looking at it. If there had been an exhibit submitted that actually had the exact distances shown on it, then, you know, then we could basically confirm the fact that the prevailing front yard setback exception would fly here, so you wouldn't need the variance.
Well, I think we should proceed as if we need the variance and...
My opinion, once again, my opinion is that's what we should do, yeah.
Well, I would partially use that as the basis for the appropriateness, and I think something the board could also consider as well is that the applicant could verify through a shooting, a survey, actual shooting to verify that is indeed the case. But that's partially why I showed the aerial, and I did undertake those measurements. So I would opine that, that the variance is appropriate nonetheless.
Just to let them clear on the facts of the matter, can you run down the setbacks that you estimate for lots 118.6, 118.7, and to east?
118.6, I had it at 28 feet, 118.7 at 30 feet, 178.6 at 17.3, 178.5 at 12.7, and 178.4 at 14.6.
Thank you. So we're going to proceed on the basis that a variance will be necessary, given the realities, however, that it might be applicable to do an exact measurement and render that variance unnecessary if that's a sticking point?
Understood. And then the courts also suggest, attempt to demonstrate that the proposed use does not violate any traditional zoning purposes such as light air and open space. Since this application meets all of the required setbacks, and with the exception of potentially the Woodland Avenue setback, there clearly are no negative impacts being created as a result of replacement of the building despite there being an undersized lot. And I would continue to opine that on the, with the, on the Woodland Avenue frontage, because we are, in my opinion, adhering to the prevalent front yard setback, and I think we could verify and demonstrate that that variance is indeed not required, that we are promoting appropriate night air and open space in this environment and producing building setbacks that are consistent with the intent and purpose of your zone plan. I just, we're not having exact setbacks, you know, I think the board recognizes that most of these homes were constructed many years ago, and there aren't active building files on hand. By way of example, if you look in the south-sawy direction, there's numerous properties that are, for example, the entire Block 177 is, and I'm going to talk about this in a moment, is, consists of 5,000 square-foot lots. All these properties that you can see, that's above the red zoning line that's shown on the bottom of the map, are all in the R4 district. And you can see on the corner properties that, sometimes it's referred to as a street-side yard, you have two front yards, that there are setbacks that I would estimate are well less than 15, 10, even closer to 5 feet in many instances. So what we're proposing is essentially a smaller-size home than really exists in the neighborhood as a result of us creating that expanded setback on built properties. And I do have some statistics for you. On Block 178, that's the block where the subject property is located, there are 11 other lots that are 5,000 square feet in area. Only three lots in the entire block are conforming. Within 200 feet of the subject property, that's the yellow ring, 18 at a 29 lots, or 62 percent, are under... lots or sixty-two percent are undersized for the district, and within three hundred feet, thirty-one out of forty-seven lots are sixty-six percent are undersized. So it's clearly a prevailing character of the area, and as I mentioned already, within the adjoining block, 177, all twenty-four lots are five thousand square feet and undersized. So it's clear to me that likely this is created by violence of the application, that what was created here is a lot that's consistent with the area. For these reasons as well, I would opine that even in the C2 case, that this application promotes appropriate light air and open space for the reasons I mentioned, so it would meet purpose C of the municipal land use law, and because of the information that I provided regarding the plating pattern and how this is consistent and largely is the character of the area, this would not result in a substantial detriment to the public good and neighboring properties near your zone plan as well. That pretty much summarizes my testimony in this regard.
Counsel?
Yeah, Mr. Ricky, again, maybe I misheard it, but most of the homes that you did this analysis on, are they Cape Cod's, one-story homes?
They're mostly capes and other one and a half story homes.
Okay.
There's some ranches and...
Okay.
But there were very few two-story homes, even though there was one across the street, but there were very few in the area.
Now, just, thank you. The square footage of the proposed building, Mr. Ritchie?
It has a footprint of around a thousand square feet, so it's a modest sized town. I mean, I would even opine that the home could be expanded towards Woodland consistent with that prevailing setback, it would be appropriate, but I'm not sure the board feels...
And the size conforms with the character of the neighborhood, correct?
I believe yes, and even it's smaller than, I think, many of the homes, if not most.
Questions for the panel?
I believe you have not addressed the line of sight. This is coming from Roseland Place at the intersection with Woodland Avenue.
In terms of, sir?
When the building goes up, will that affect the line of sight if someone's coming from Roseland making a right on Woodland?
I do not believe so.
There's a stop sign there, right?
As you can see on the aerial, the home is shown in green, it's set back thirty feet from Roseland and twenty, and then twenty-three point five feet from Woodland, but that's, you know, further to the east at that point, so there's a very clear line at the intersection there.
Okay, thank you.
Frank, you wanted to go through the other engineering comments and see...
Let me just check with counsel if that's right. Would you like us to go through this, with this witness, and go through the different points, and would that be okay?
Yes.
All right, yes, Frank, please.
The main comment that we have is 5.1, where we're looking for existing and proposed spy elevations in order to comply with the stormwater ordinance?
We should probably go through them all before now, when we go through these, because I'm a planner, I didn't...
We're just looking for that as part of a condition of approval, that be submitted along with your building permit application. It's condition 5.1, we're just looking for existing and proposed elevations. Main thing is we're making, want to make sure that you're not going to put additional stormwater runoff onto the adjoining lots.
Okay, we agree with that.
And then the other concern we have, which actually is something that's not in our memo, but we're concerned that there's, right now, it looks like one parking spot off the street based on your plan, we would recommend that the driveway be widened to, so that's wide enough for two parking spots?
The biggest issue with handings is that it's set back thirty feet from the street, there's no garage. If there were oversight, technically usually eighteen feet, right, is a standard dimension for a car, so technically thirty-six feet would be needed to fully comply. Average sized cars are around fifteen feet, maybe you look at a Suburban, it's at eighteen feet. Larger vehicles would sit out at this dimension, but functionally speaking, I agree with the engineer that that does create an issue with needing the two car parking requirement.
So is the applicant willing to widen the driveway?
To fit two cars side by side.
To fit two cars, so in essence make it twenty foot wide so it's the same width as the house?
We're not prepared, we don't want to suggest that we have to start with street parking for the residents, that's not acceptable. All right, so we need to have it do, yeah?
And Frank, one question for you on 4.3, do you want a letter from the air engineer just certifying that there's no line of sight issues? Would that be sufficient?
That would be sufficient, yes.
Okay, all right.
And they can submit that as a condition of approval also.
Okay, all right, good.
That allows me, lands me a big fence in this complex, but we agree with that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for the planner?
Yes.
Yeah. The first thing, and it's just a clarification and to let everyone know, that the rear of the proposed dwelling is set right on the rear yard setback line of twenty feet. At first blush, when I looked at the survey without seeing the architectural plans and renderings, I thought, boy, if they want to put anything on that, it's going to create another variance. But there's nothing proposed on the backside of that.
Okay, so...
The actual, yeah, the actual entry porch is going to be on the side, which is going to be on the Woodland Avenue side, and they would still maintain a twenty-three point five yard foot setback to the foundation of the dwelling and have an open porch on there. That porch couldn't be covered because if it was a covered porch, it would change the setback to correspond to however far the covered porch stuck out. So right now, it's proposed to be open, it would have to remain open, if anyone ever was to come in and decide he wanted to cover that porch, they'd get back on front of this board. My next thing was the front porch, they're showing a conforming thirty foot yard setback from Roseland Avenue on the front side there, and I thought, how are they going to get away with this one? And then looking on the plans, the actual porch is part of the dwelling unit, it's inside.
Okay.
And the steps exit, once again, on the Woodland Avenue side, which makes it easy for them to expand that driveway and make it twenty feet wide, because the first thing I thought was you expand the driveway, make it the width of the front of the building, you're going to have a set of steps coming down right into your driveway, but you're not. The steps are going to come down on the side, and then you'll hook, make a quick hook there, and then you'll be in the driveway area, so I just wanted the board to envision that, you know? I don't foresee anything being done in addition to this house that would create another variance condition. But counsel, you are in agreement that that porch will be uncovered?
Yes.
And if you change that, that requires, would acquire additional variance?
Yes.
Counsel, you want to bring the owner up?
Sure.
Thank you. So please raise your right hand, I swear, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-regarded.
Please state your name, spelling your last name, affiliation for the record. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-regarded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, one of the applicants in this matter is, how long have you owned the lot in the corner of Woodland Avenue?
About fifteen, sixteen years.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
You know what, we ask you to do a favor, we do have recording problems here.
It's not just for everyone else to be able to hear, but also for the recording.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the question was, how long have you owned the property?
About fourteen years.
Fourteen years?
Yes, thank you.
And you purchased it in 2003, is that correct?
Yes.
And at any point did you try to sell that?
Yes, I did.
And in fact, you had a developer interested in purchasing the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And was that about a year or two after you purchased it?
About a year, yes.
And that developer actually proposed a plan to the board for a structure that was much wider than the one that you have now?
Correct.
And you saw that that application was ultimately denied because that structure was too big?
Yes.
And you also, that deal, that deal to sell the property actually fell through because of that application?
Correct.
Around the same time, did you ask the owner of adjoining lot two, which is the line on Roseland Avenue to your east, or to the east on the map, did you ask the owner of that property if they would be willing to purchase your property?
Yes.
And were they interested in purchasing it?
They were.
And had they ever brought it up again since then, have they ever said to you that they are now interested in?
Yes.
And that was all the way back about twelve years ago.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I have no further questions.
Any questions for the owner? A couple of questions, you said you had an application before the zoning board or the planning board?
It was...
It would have to be before the zoning, right? It was in front of the zoning board. How large was that house?
I think it was maybe thirty-five feet wide.
Yeah, and this was to be clear, a person who was going to purchase the...
I understand it was, he was not the applicant. So that house was thirty-five by...
Wide by fifty.
Thirty-five by fifty, so seventeen fifty square feet? I can speak on that, Larry, I don't have, I was going to bring the file with me, but I recollect it. What they did on that application was they created a larger side yard, they pushed the house all the way up to, if you look once again at the exhibit, and you look at block 178, lot two, and then this property that I was talking about before, 178.1, they actually pushed the house all the way up to what would be considered a prevailing front yard setback for those lots. So that setback was only, like I say once again, not exactly me, but it was about fifteen foot setback from Roseland, plus it was only about fifteen or I would think less, maybe twelve feet setback from Woodland, because they moved it away from the house at 178.2. What was left on it was a very large rear yard, it was well over the twenty feet minimum that's proposed on this one. And I know the board was uncomfortable at the time with that reduced setback on Woodland Avenue of only about twelve feet.
All right, but it was a much larger house, is...
It was a larger house, and it was, like I said, pushed forward on Roseland and pushed more over towards Woodland.
Okay, I just want to rule out there's no race duty college, I'm sure there's not, yeah?
At least, I'm going to say fifteen to eighteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
I believe...
Thirty-five by fifty would be seventeen fifty, so...
And this house is a thousand square feet, correct?
Correct.
That was my next question. Three bedrooms?
Okay.
One bath, correct?
Yes.
Is this a single?
Yeah.
Three bedrooms, one bath, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the owner?
Thank you very much. I have a few other questions, and I'd like to just thank the board for its time.
Are you going to sum up there, or are you going to add it to the public first?
Yeah, we have, it's closing remarks, I see.
As the testimony has shown, clearly the benefits to the public outweigh any detriment here, you have a five thousand square foot lot in amongst a lot of five thousand square foot lots in this particular neighborhood, this is not out of character for the area as Mr. Ricky said, and all of the criteria have really been met for this particular group of variances.
Thank you, counsel. At this point, we'd like to open the meeting to the public to comment, we have to have a motion to do so, so can we have a motion to open the public portion of this meeting?
I move to open.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All a favor? Any opposed? So if there's anyone here from the public who would like to comment on this application, please come to the front, one at a time, and we'll square you in, and we welcome your comments.
Sir, please raise your right hand, I swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-regarded?
Yes, I do.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
My name is Richard, last name is Sabo, S-A-B-O.
And let's get your address as well.
Yeah, please state, Mr. Richard.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to preface this with basically saying that most people in that neighborhood have a perception, might be in this perception, that the township would less work that area town off.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the...
Would less work that area town off.
Mr. Sabo, can you speak into the...
Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, okay. There's the perception that most of the neighbors there, that the township would less work that part of the neighborhood off. You know, the first district is the oldest district of North Brunswick, we're about two blocks, basically out of New Brunswick. The areas within two or three blocks seem to be going down, we're trying to make an effort to keep the neighborhood up, okay? I feel we kind of find it hard to understand the fact that, looking at the parameter of the ordinance, Mr. Prince apparently plans not even within fifty percent of what the ordinance even allows. I mean, we're making an effort, we're making a big deal about twenty-three foot set off, when he's only five thousand feet of nine thousand square feet, that's allowed by the ordinance. And even as far as the width, you've got to write down here basically, the width allowed by ordinance is what requires ninety feet, it's fifty feet. I mean, it's almost fifty percent to sixty percent less than the ordinance dictates. Now, it was impressive with the aerial maps and everything else like that, but the way I'm looking at it is this, I can't see the justification for allowing a house to be built of that size and using justification that houses in 1950 and 1960, or before there was existing ordinance, were allowed to be built that way. Townships, I think they become wiser, I think they become more astute as far as with the problems the neighborhood's on, as far as overcrowding, as far as fire, you know, as far as quality of life issues, and that I would think is why the ordinance was passed to begin with. I mean, they just were arbitrarily allowed that, not the punishments. So I mean, to use the justification that fifty years ago, a house before there was any ordinance whatsoever, the township evolved and learned it better, it's going to be this justification to build this house of such a small dimension. Now, if you look where that street is right now, we're already saying right now that they, you have to have two cars parked there, the parking situation is atrocious in that area, it's atrocious. That area, that lower block of Woodland Avenue, basically every morning, okay, everybody drops their kids off there to go to bed in school, or park in the school, whatever you want to call it, I can't even get on my driveway in here. Now, the handful of cars that are up there often run a lot of days.
I'm sorry?
All the cars that are parked up there that run in the streets, it looks like Jersey Park and Ride. It's all for rental property up there. You stick another two or three cars up there, they ain't going to be able to move. Second of all, it's a snow emergency street, okay? All those cars have to go walk that snow emergency street, New York Park and State Street, that's always in front of my house and everybody else's house down there, right? And you can't even get a plan on that street, you know? So, I mean, this came before the planning board and also came before the zoning board before, because I appeared. I don't see where anything's changed.
This application came before the planning board?
Oh, yes it did, yes it did, Dominic Tendarelli was the lawyer. Dominic Tendarelli was the lawyer, yes it was, I was here both times. Paton Williams was on one of the, either the planning or zoning board, okay? I'm making one story short.
No, it didn't, the property that came in front of the planning board was...
I had appeared twice in this, sir.
Yeah.
You looked at it, right?
Yes.
Look at this house right here. The actual property that came in front of the planning board was block 178, lot four, the property behind it, that's ten thousand square feet, looking to subdivide that property and was denied by the planning board. This property only appeared before this, so you're wrong.
Dominic Tendarelli was the attorney, I'm telling you, we're in the area. Dominic Tendarelli's my cousin.
Perhaps the applicant can answer that question?
No, you guys are questioning.
Well, can we ask the applicant that question? Was this matter ever brought before the planning board?
I think it was twelve years ago, I wasn't the applicant.
Before the planning board?
He wasn't the applicant, he wasn't the applicant.
Okay, the other court, the other court is...
Nobody's listening, but I'm telling you, because I know, I've been here thirty-one years, and I look at every one of these applications, it was block 178, lot four, this lot right here wanted to subdivide his lot, and he was denied by the planning board.
Yeah, you've...
This is not a subdivision, this is a nest, oh, my plan is something...
He was in Nestle, in front of my planning board, and I had appeared before the planning board, and it was on the same lot.
Well, I, I'm gonna...
Honestly, it was not this applicant. Maybe that lot, maybe this lot was part of that subdivision, that they wanted to give... Because it would have been in front of the planning board, any subdivision only goes in front of the planning board. It would have included this lot, but the only single application for this lot...
It wasn't just about a subdivision, he had architectural.
Mr. Sabo, sir.
Perhaps, perhaps he did, but dealing with this...
Mr. Prayetti is our zoning officer and our custodian of records.
No, I understand, sir, I'm not imagining this.
Perhaps, perhaps he did, but dealing with this...
Mr. Sabo?
Yes. Mr. Sabo? Perhaps we're both saying the same thing, but Mr. Prayetti is saying that the application dealing with the planning board dealt with lot one seventy-eight four, and it could have been a, a lot sharing situation, where they were gonna take some property from, from lot one seventy, one seventy-eight three in the subdivision, and they may have presented some architectural, so... But in terms of what has appeared before this board, it was simply the one application for, for a home that was seven hundred and fifty, approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet about...
Seventy, seventeen hundred.
Seventeen fifty, about how long?
Yeah, yeah, the only individual, for this lot only.
So I, I think that that's the first question we're gonna be asked to answer as a board, Mr. Sabo, is is that application substantially different than, than this application? I think we have to answer that as a board, and I would think it is first and foremost, because it's a seven hundred and fifty foot reduction, which, which is three quarters reduction, so I would think that that would be a substantial modification from the application to avoid what's...
Right, the actual denial by the planning board was because of what counsel had mentioned before. They were taking enough square footage away from that lot that had ten thousand square feet to make it a non-conforming lot.
Right.
And they said, we can't do, we can't take a lot that's conforming and make it non-conforming, so they denied it.
Right. Mr. Chairman, just to ask...
Yeah, that lot, you're right, you're right, this lot here was...
Well, I'm saying, I'm not trying to argue with you, I just know I was here twice on this issue.
Yeah, but the applicant on that lot was the applicant for the other lot.
Mr. Chairman, there was a question asked by Mr. Abode, whether or not, in my opinion, race judicata would apply here.
Yes.
That's why I asked that question of Mr. Prince of Ali, how large was that house? His testimony was seventeen hundred and fifty square feet versus one thousand square feet here, and he required, and according to Mr. Prayetti, also required some further bolt variances as a result of the size of that, that house.
Yeah, the setback variances were probably fifty percent more than what's being requested here.
So the, the report, the most, you know, the reported case dealing with this is a case at the guy of Edison, Bresman versus Gash, and it talks about the fact that as long as there's a significant change in the applications, significant change in what's being proposed, then it would not be race judicata. So if you were to ask my opinion, I would opine that, because we love that word tonight, that it would not be a race judicata situation, and this board can consider this application on its own merits this evening.
My second question, have you looked at the areas, Mr. Sabo?
I live on that, it's twenty-six years.
Have you had a chance to look at the areas and property sizes and things of that nature?
Well, I, I never would have come to come with this. My point is this, though, that this new ordinance is maybe because in the past, they saw they made mistakes by allowing a house to be built on blocks that small.
Within the, within the ordinance, and I don't know if you heard the dialogue between Mr. Prayetti and, and Mr. Ricky, within the ordinance, there's some language that allows for prevailing setbacks, and if, if, if the testimony that we've been given is, is accurate, that their setback would fall within the ordinance.
But let me ask you this, the very houses he's using for justification would probably not even be allowed to be built because they wouldn't be up to code. They were built fifty years ago. They probably went past the structural, the plumbing, the electrical, the fire, so my thing is to use something else built fifty years ago as justification to build a house before I leave the ordinance.
I think that's an apples and oranges conversation.
It is if you don't live there.
No, I think we're talking about setbacks in structural and engineering, and I, and I think that those are, those are...
Oh, okay, I finish?
Absolutely.
All right. I mean, the other, the other point I'm trying to make is this, though, we're all worried about our quality of life, and we're worried about our property values, okay? Now, everybody seems to miss the point here, that was a subdivided lot from sixty-nine to Roseland, all right? Now, somebody buys that lot and doesn't research it, and buys an undersized lot under the assumption that maybe they compare some variances, well, that's a big assumption.
It would have something point zero one.
So I don't think we should have to deal with the unintended consequence if somebody made a bad business decision. And I don't think that should paramount your mind, you just to feel sorry for a guy because he bought a lot and had it fourteen years, remember? I mean, I'm worried about my property values, most of the people have been living here for twenty-five or thirty years, you know? The other thing I'm saying is that you have to look at that place in the morning. You're talking about setback, you're talking about parking spaces, there's a lot of suppositions here. It may be twenty-three feet, maybe we'd get two cars in there, maybe we don't want to park cars there. You have to go on that block, and you have to see how many cars are on that street, and especially in the morning when those kids, there's a, there's a path that leads at the end of Stevens Street and the end of Woodland Avenue, and they drop kids off by the hunters there, and they march down the street over that path to the front door to score. Now, you're talking about putting more cars there, you're talking about, I didn't even think about the final site issue at the stop sign.
I understand.
You know, but, yeah, as it may, I mean, I have read the subject here with Mr. Prince of Ali, that he's got a lot, I don't blame him for trying to make money, but you can't, kinda can't blame yourself worrying about a property value also. It's not gonna enhance the neighborhood. I just don't even understand, like, when you're actually looking at it, it's fifty percent of what the ordinance allows. I mean, you guys are, you're bigger than over seven feet as far as standoff, as far as, like, the porch to the, to the sidewalk, and it says right here, it's five thousand square feet versus nine thousand square feet, which is dictated in the ordinance, you know? It's ninety feet versus fifty feet, which is dictated in the ordinance. All right, now, we're not even talking about somebody getting on like a mother, daughter type dwelling because their mother's sick and they wanna put her up down here, this isn't a hardship, this is a business venture. Somebody bought a lot, can't sell the lot, and it's too small to buy, I mean, the whole thing went, I mean, we're gonna have to pay the unintended consequences for a bad business decision? I mean, that's my point, I'm not being melodramatic about it, but, but I'm saying, you talk about, you talk about rentals or anything else. I got one rental on my street, two houses down from me, right? It's always been, you know, always been the same people living here for about twenty-five years. When a property starts, a car gets bought there, a car gets blown up in the driveway, two houses down from me. So, yeah, I'm a little concerned about the neighborhood, I'm a little concerned about what goes up down here. Now, this could be the catalyst. What's gonna stop anybody from rearing any parcel of land in that neighborhood and saying, okay, hey, wow, well, they got away with it on Roseland, that's why I'm not using my house there. But this is a bungalow, this belongs on Midway Beach. Seriously, maybe one thousand square feet, they're kind of maybe one thousand square feet. I'm not telling you exactly what it is.
No, it's gonna be a thousand square feet.
It's exactly one thousand.
Yeah.
So, 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 so,
Forty-eight Woodland Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
And the next door.
Next door, okay.
Actually, whatever I wanted to say, the gentleman already said that. The problem is, I don't have any problem, the house, the traffic, before the gentleman said, "There is no traffic." He doesn't live right there. We are the one living there. When the morning, somebody has to go and check it. My house, I couldn't get out because of school, kids, the car parking even to my driveway. Then you come by intersection, somebody's car parking the side, there is no way to come to my house. Has to hit the car if somebody's standing there. That's the situation right now. Because everybody, if it's okay, so we know two person living there, he's going to be, he not going to live there. We are the one who's going to be, who are the neighbor? We are the one going to be suffering. Then, there's a small house building there. Then it's value go around the neighbor, the price go value all going to be down. Doesn't matter how, I have a good sized house. I wanted to sell it. They'd already told, the area look like it, there's no value because all small, small houses.
Your, ma'am, your lot is 178-4? The one right next door?
By the way?
Yes, your lot is 178-4?
Um, I'm sorry, what did you, uh, forty-eight Woodland Avenue, that's right.
Seventy-eight-two.
Because I was here before the same situation. I want to subdivide the property.
She said she's on Woodland.
She says she's on Woodland.
Woodland.
Roseland.
Oh, Roseland, Roseland or Woodland?
No, my address is forty-eight Woodland.
She's on Roseland.
No, Woodland.
Woodland.
How, how big is your lot? Is yours a ten thousand square foot lot?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that was the, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. I was here at the same situation because I want to subdivide it, then they denied. You guys have denied, then I built it.
No, the planning board, this is, this is what I'm getting at. This was the application in front of the planning board. She was the applicant and the owner of the.
Right.
And what have you subsequently done to the property?
No, I didn't do it.
You put an addition on.
Yeah, I put it, I put the addition for the living room and the, make a bigger kitchen. That's it.
Because you were allowed to do that because you had that large.
Yeah, right, right.
Yep.
Yeah. Then I wanted to, actually, I was planning to, he was denying the same time. I was planning to buy this, his house, then we can make a decent sized house.
Right.
Then I was heard he was planning to sell the house, the land. Then, and I asked my neighbor, which one is the who, the original property owner? I asked the lady, why don't you buy it? She said, he asked also, he said he not wanted to sell the property. The next one, I don't know if it's the truth or not, I asked personally the lady. But I didn't ask the gentleman, I don't know who was the owner that time, but I heard someone is saying the property not going to be sold. That's where then I decided to go make a little more bigger house. That is, the horrible, the traffic is horrible, especially the school time, I mean, closing time and opening time, or any other parents function or anything, there is no way you can even walk. Because especially the area mostly is like a random people living there. And the school park and the intersection is a very danger. Nobody, even the stops need that, nobody stop. There is one car this side, it can't even come because are coming night time to work, they park already, it can't even get there, it can't even come to my house. That's how, that was my concern. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Give me the opportunity.
Thank you. Someone else from the public?
Yeah.
You know the routine by now, we have to swear you in and give us your name.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-deprecating?
Yes.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address.
John Gukowski, G-U-T-K-O-W-S-K-I.
I, I didn't catch that, sir. What was it again?
G-U-T-K-O-W-S-K-I.
And your first name?
John.
John?
Yeah.
And what's your address, sir?
Eight Seventy Stevens Street.
Okay.
With the back of my house, the driveway is right on Woodland.
Thank you.
As you can see on the thing. Now, we've been there over sixty years. Okay, now, it's, it's a good neighborhood, it was a good neighborhood, but I can't see a house being there because the house, that brick house on the two-story, that's right on the school, four families in that house. You can go there now, I bet you there's six cars parked right on the, right there on the corner there. They're guaranteed, they're parked in the driveway too, there's so many people living there.
Mr. Carr, are you listening to this testimony? He's indicating that the house on Roseland Avenue has four families. On Woodland or Roseland, sir?
Woodland.
Nick, can you identify which one it is?
Can you tell us the address, sir?
Huh?
Can you tell us what address it is? And I'm sure.
I can't, it's just forty.
Forty-three. It's forty-three Woodland.
Is that something we can look up?
It's a registered, uh, four-family house with the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
And the attachment with funds, like they get.
So it's permissible?
Every two and a half years.
So it's a permissible four-family house?
Yes. I'm not saying that, I'm saying there's so many people living there, they take up the whole road right there already, if you put a house over here, they clear, there's nothing to ever park on the road because there won't be no room. And I've been living there all my life, and I can't see a house at that corner lot, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know, I just don't see it. And then there's four kids, the kids in the water too. They were tall, they didn't do school, I said, boy, that kid should do anything. They're supposed to be dropped off in the parking lot, they bad fart. But people keep running down the road, I said, there accidents and everything else on the road. You know, and the street, that corner, it's odd, odd shaped intersection. People don't stop at the stop sign, coming this way, this way, beating for the house, they don't have to be able to see, you know, it's coming up, wouldn't have him.
I, I think there, there was testimony dealing with the sight line, saying that the applicant would submit the appropriate documentation to our engineer to say that there wouldn't be any interference with the sight line. I think that's going to be a condition of, if, if this.
That's why I brought that up, because I can't see it. I mean, I can fit a mouse on that small property without blocking anything. We're going to put it ourselves.
Well, if, if, if the application was approved, one of the conditions would be that there would be a, a clear sight line. There wouldn't be any impediment to the sight line.
Uh, well, that's my big concern, I mean, it's just there, I mean, it's, it needs to go down with the avenue now. Or not have it for it, you can't park, you can't park in a parking spot on the street. When I was a junior, there were no cars in any street.
But is what we're going to.
I know, too many Mexicans live in Woodland Avenue, that's what the problem is. Too many people in Woodland Avenue, and that's another thing, because they rent this house one to live there, that's why I'm afraid of it.
Okay, can we just fill your comments to suggest that what you're concerned about is additional traffic?
Traffic, yeah, we can get it.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else from the public comment?
Sir, let me swear, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self-deprecating?
I do.
Please state your name, spelling your last name, address for the record.
First name is Douglas, last name is Z-I-M-N-E-R-M-A-N, twenty-eight Woodland Avenue. I've been a resident there twenty-three years. Just want to express the same concerns as far as parking in the area, children going to the school, a lot of kids also walk that, so it's a major concern for me. My kids used to do that, I took my kids down that road. Also, there's stove, stove parking, for stove, no, for stove. Also, I had a question, where is the driveway, where is the driveway going to be in the house? On Woodland or, on Woodland, okay. Anybody that have a garage or shed, right? You think that's feasible?
I'm not.
You think that's feasible not having a garage or a shed on the house?
Not having a garage or shed.
Yeah.
Well, no, there's, no, no, they have the right to have a shed on the property as long as it's the proper size and it's a minimum of five feet off the property line and in the rear yard.
Okay.
But there is no garage.
There is no garage.
There's twenty-four, you.
I just hope that for as long as the children and the traffic is school clear.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Is the motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
Mr. Chairman, we need to close the public portion of the meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public portion is now closed. Counsel, get you back.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's, this is an application for C variances relief, I believe there's three variances being sought. One is for minimum lot area, this being a corner lot, five thousand feet being provided where nine thousand is required. Also, lot width on a corner lot, ninety feet required, fifty feet provided, and front yard setback, thirty feet minimum and twenty-three and a half feet fronting on Woodland Avenue. Was it twenty-three and a half or twenty-two and a half?
Twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-three and a half. So those are the three both variances. Any conditions of approval would be that this will be a two-car driveway instead of a one-car driveway, that the applicant will provide a certification from an engineer, that the proposed dwelling does not obstruct the line of sight from Roseland at its intersection with Woodland, and finally, I guess it's the rear porch would remain open.
I must tell more to management, concerns.
Yeah, and anything else that was, right, any other comments in Mr. Carley's memo of December twelfth, twenty sixteen, were apparently acceptable to the applicant, so that's your application.
Any questions, comments?
If I can ask a question, Mr. President. Is there a limit on vertical expansion for this property? How tall of a building could be built on this property after this initial home is built?
Actually, um, there's been case law that says that if you've got a non-conforming setback, that you can expand it vertically along that non-conforming line and only be subject to a building permit application and not need to go for a variance. So I guess my answer to you would be, yes, they could potentially add a level.
Okay.
Am I correct, Mr. Sax? Yeah, I guess that could trigger some other issues, which I guess could be if they were adding additional bedrooms, it could trigger an increase in parking under the RSIS, right? That's a good point. I was just going to add that our residential zones don't have a floor area. Right. Ratio requirement. Right, but we do have obviously. Frank was saying at this time, so. Right, but we do have the RSIS. We do have the RSIS, correct. So if we were to build a second level with three more bedrooms, probably need another parking space, which I don't think could be accommodated on that site, so, so this is going to remain as a, as a one-story, or one and a half story.
Is that, John, is that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Peretti. Why are so many of these lots, five thousand square feet?
Uh, because when the map originally was filed, once again, I'll reference that nineteen-twenty-four filing of the map, which was the, called the, uh, the map of Bullard Heights is actually what it was called, this whole area here. They were how the lots were established.
There was no zoning in nineteen-twenty-four?
I was just going to say, our, our earliest zoning ordinance that I retired, it was nineteen-forty, back in our nineteen-forty zoning ordinance, it was permitted in this zone to build up to a six-family home. That's why you'll find the six-family homes, that's why you'll find the four-family homes and whatnot out there, and they're built as that. It's not like somebody went in and converted a lawn home.
Right.
And they were built as that, and they were built as a break because the ordinance prohibited.
Yeah, if I could just add, in the nineteen-twenty's, I think the only, the only places where you saw zoning laws were in the large cities. You certainly wouldn't have seen it in North Brunswick.
Yeah, as those uses, as those uses, they're allowed to pass title, allowed to transfer title, they can be sold and bought by somebody else and can continue to be used. But they're, they were destroyed by fire or any other means whatsoever. It used to say natural means and before terrorism was even a word, and now, if they're blown up or something happens to them like that, they cannot be rebuilt. And we've even gone another step in two thousand and eight. This used to be a one and two-family zone, so you could build a two-family zone as a break, just coming to get a permit to build a two-family home. That's changed, we no longer have any two-family homes.
Right.
In here. So if a two-family home in this zone was to be destroyed by whatever means, you cannot rebuild a two-family, you could only rebuild a single-family.
So how, how is this lot empty? Like, how, I mean, has it just always been empty or?
That's a question I can't answer.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it appears that it's been vacant for a long period of time. Yeah.
Okay. So it's just this piece of land that just didn't get built on?
Yeah, there's, there's a few out, out in this neighborhood.
Okay.
And, and, and believe, and there's a lot of corner lots out here that are fifty by one hundred.
And what?
That are undeveloped, no, undeveloped, never been developed.
And the neighbor?
In the area, I would say, Service Avenue, the avenue, area and whatnot.
And I believe Mr. Ricky was telling me that the, he had looked at aerials and this had been a vacant lot for a very long time.
So did the applicant know about the zoning when he, when he bought the property?
I'm not sure that's really relevant for purposes. I mean, it certainly, I'm sure the applicant did.
The neighbors are saying that he made a bad decision.
Well, we don't know if it's a bad decision, yet. You know, certainly it's the prerogative of anybody to buy property and it's the prerogative of this board to grant variance relief when the proofs have been established, and that's what this board has to decide.
Perhaps, Mr. Sax, we can have some dialogue because I, I understand, I understand what my colleague is saying, but I guess my, my concern is, when you look at the surrounding neighborhood, you look at the five thousand square feet lots that appear to be predominant in the neighborhood, we've heard testimony that, that there's, the, the, the proposed home would, would fit within the characteristic of the other homes, it would be a thousand square feet. I tend to accept the testimony, and I think Mr. Peretti does, dealing with the prevailing front yard setback issues and arguments Mr. Ricky made, in the sense that he may not even require a front yard setback, because, because averaging it, but even if.
For purposes of this evening.
Even if he did for purposes of this evening, I think that the six and a half feet complies or conforms with, with, with the other issues in, in the neighborhood. I've, I've heard the residents' concerns dealing with, with parking, and, and to me, that appears to be the, parking and sight line appear to be the dominant concerns, and, excluding the parking and sight line issue, I think our engineer proposed that we increase the driveway width to, to accommodate more parking spaces, to, to eliminate the old street parking concerns. I, I, whether it was a bad business deal or not is, is not a concern of, of mine at least. My concern is.
That's my concern of this board.
Which is not, and, and my concern is, the applicant has, we, we cannot sit back as a board and render a property unusable if, if, in, in not, not allow a use that appears in my mind to, appears to conform with the characteristic of the neighborhood. And that, that would be the concern that I have as, as, as a board member because it, it appears to me that, you know, understanding the concerns of the neighborhood, I, I think there's some policing issues that have to be addressed with respect to traffic. I, you know, being, being a resident in North Brunswick, I can tell you our, our town doesn't have forgotten neighborhoods, and, and now that the issue's been brought up, and I'm certain Mr. Peretti will, will also bring that up at, at the appropriate staff meetings to, to address the parking concerns, just dealing with school, school hour children, to, to ensure the safety of our children, because that is a predominant thought in my mind and in a township's mind, so I'm glad that was brought up.
One of the things that Frank and I had, had discussed here, why, why, you know, the discussion was going on, is to have the council, through Title Thirty-nine, restrict parking from the driveway expansion that was considered and proposed to the corner, and potentially having Woodland Avenue for a certain distance, no parking here at the corner.
Yeah, I, I would.
No parking here at the corner.
I would ask that that maybe.
And that would open up the intersection.
That's, that's a wonderful solution, but, so going forward, I, I don't know if we're in a position now to, to make a.
Someone could make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, let me just quickly summarize if I might. It seems to me that we have two or three major issues here. Over, I think it was sixty-something percent of all of the lots in a three-hundred-foot radius of this property would not qualify, over sixty percent. That's a fairly significant number. So the question we have is, this lot has been here since the nineteen-twenty's. It's been, it's been vacant for a very long time. The question that is before us is that, is the proposed building of this thousand-square-foot home consistent with what is in the neighborhood? So that it would not be inappropriate use and by its existence create a major change in the neighborhood? And then the second aspect of that, and clearly, clearly, over and over again, the residents are concerned about traffic. The, the issue of dropping off children at schools is incredibly important, safety is incredibly important, but in, but is the, but is creating an additional one thousand square foot home in a way that is consistent with the neighborhood, is, is that to bear the burden of all of the problems with parking and dropping off kids at public schools? I, I'm not certain that that's an appropriate connection. It is a real issue. It clearly is a real issue. And, you know, hopefully, we're able to do this, but the questions that we can consider here are, is this, if we permit this use, is it going to, by its existence, create additional problems?
I'm not convinced.
And I'm not convinced. Provided that the line of sight is clearly articulated, that, that drivers from both streets can see clearly around the corners, any children who are walking, any cars that are approaching, that has got to be the first and foremost criteria for evaluating whether this is a problem or not.
Mr. Chairman, I want to comment on the sight lines. If you're looking at the aerial here, every single corner property.
It's closer.
It's closer. You're looking at Glenridge and Edgewood, you're looking at Rosewood and Glenridge, you're looking, I mean, every single block. I think this applicant is, is, I mean, that's just to mention sight lines. As far as setbacks, if you look at the existing setbacks of Woodland Avenue, they're far closer. Or the existing setbacks of Roseland. You know, I, I understand the neighborhood's concern about traffic and parking, but that certainly shouldn't have fallen underneath the application.
Yeah.
You know, within the realm of a thousand square foot building.
No, I'm sorry, you made out.
What was that piece of property?
Excuse me, you made out. The public, Mr. Saber, the public portion is closed, it's closed. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with you there.
Motion.
Given all of this, do we have a motion?
Motion except existing application.
With the restrictions.
With the restrictions set forth. Sight lines and the.
Engineer addition.
Additional driveway width of twenty feet in engineering.
And the store.
And stormwater.
Stormwater.
Sightline. Sightline.
All those, please also want, do you also want no parking here at the corner?
Yeah, I want the Title Thirty-nine, no parking from the driveway to the corner.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Just a second.
We didn't hear.
I, I would second, I would second. I think that when we apply the burden of proof that's required, I think that the applicant has demonstrated hardship. I think that, I think that the applicant has also demonstrated a willingness to try to mitigate some of the community concerns. I, I agree with Mr. Chairman and with, and with Mr. Farhat. I think that when we look at the surrounding neighborhood, and I said it earlier, I don't want to repeat myself, many of the homes are on the five thousand square foot lots, and this, this home seems to conform with that development and with that characteristic. So when we, when, when is a lot too small was, was a question posed, and the answer, I don't have an answer, but I, I can tell you if this application were for a seventeen-hundred square foot home as it was earlier, the lot would be too small. The lot would not, this, this application would not, in my mind, then conform with, with the, with the characteristics of the neighborhood, and the setbacks would, would, would require a little bit too much. I would ask that, obviously, I know that, I know that the proposal is for a one thousand square foot home, and I, I'd like that to be a condition also, the home not exceed one thousand square feet. Just so I think, I think that we could then eliminate any concerns.
I hate to keep talking.
Huh?
I hate to keep.
I got a marker in my hand.
Just for some additional information, that calculation's called principal building coverage, and it has to do with the maximum allowed of principal building coverage to cover, cover a property. In this zone, it's twenty-five percent. It used to be thirty, in two thousand and eight, we reduced it to twenty-five because there were some big homes being built on these smaller lots. So if you do the math, a thousand divided by five thousand is twenty percent. So there, five percent under the twenty-five percent allowable, so.
And, and I think that, thank you, Mr. Peretti.
Tom, can I ask if your concern is with building size or with residential square footage?
I think my concern is a little bit with the residential square footage too, to try to.
That the habitable space not exceed a thousand square feet of.
It's, it's actually the building footprint.
Yeah, the footprint's a thousand feet.
The footprint's a thousand, the, the livable space, I think it's two thousand.
No, no, no.
It was a two-story.
Yeah, it's not a two-story house. He's, he's requested, he's requested a, a, to build a one and a half story house.
And I'm wondering whether or not the condition that Mr. Vogel was, wishes to put on the application is not for the building footprint, but for the.
Actual square footage.
Livable square footage.
Yes.
That would be good.
That's, that's, that's the application.
It has approved.
Yes.
So do we have a second?
That's my second.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Herr.
Take a vote, take a vote.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Vogel?
Yes, with all the noted conditions.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Momo?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Shadie?
No.
Mr. Reddick?
I think the applicant has worked really hard to make an appropriate use of this small lot. The lot cannot be changed. I think the proposed structure is modest, the agreements to accommodate the concerns that we have regarding parking and line of sight, stormwater are appropriate, and so I, I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, folks, and we'll hit the second application.
Goodness.
I'm gonna give him about an hour, or an hour and a half, forty-five minutes. Alright folks. I've lost some of us. You're all here, and we're not. I hate when that happens. Alright, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. And we are hearing the application of Braceland Gardens. It's located at 1628 Route 27. That's Block 18.02, Lot 61. This is a site plan, use, and bulk variance, as it's being sought, to relocate the existing fifteen-hundred-and-ninety-square-foot dwelling to the front northeast corner of the property, and to construct a twenty-two-unit assisted living facility of seventeen-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty square feet, along with the associated site improvements. This is an R2 residential zone district.
Thank you. My name is Edward P. Shammy Jr. I'm the president of Braceland Gardens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for explaining the essence of the application. My first witness would be Jean Selby, who is one of the principals of the app.
Ma'am, please raise your right hand. I'll swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, selfie God?
I do.
Alright, please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation, for the record.
I'm Jean Selby, S-D-L-B-Y.
Jean, you're the applicant in this application to the board, correct?
Yes.
And why is it that you seek the construction of the living facility on this site?
Because it is so-
We need you to get closer to the mic so we can see, and they, and the board.
Okay. It is so needed within the community. The Department of Health currently does not have an assisted living facility. They do have two senior buildings, but there is nothing to accommodate people that are disabled or who need any type of help in their everyday living.
And what's the difference between an assisted living facility and a-
Counselor? I'm sorry. Can I get you to put that microphone closer to your ear?
Not yet. I'm so sorry.
I hate to be a pain to them.
No, it's no problem at all. I can do it. What's the difference, just briefly, between a senior housing, assisted living, and a nursing home facility?
Well, nursing home facilities are actually people that are in situations that they are chronically ill and that need twenty-four-hour care at all times, and having twenty-four-hour nurses always available to them. Assisted living is not like that. Assisted living is that you may have a problem and you need to be able to have assistance during the course of the day, but also have, you know, care that is available to you at all times.
And in senior housing, as we have next door here, Ray Sheedon Herman Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in that circumstance, there is no care available?
There is no care available, yeah.
Okay. So assisted living is kind of the bridge between senior housing, for some people, and/or people who don't need nursing home care, but who need some assistance?
That's correct.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Are you gonna manage the facilities that you're in?
I don't need to be there, yeah.
So you will be the operations individual in terms of-
That's correct.
Functions and-
I look forward to it, yes.
Together with your husband, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you've re- have you been certified to operate a facility like this?
Yes, I have been licensed CALA, Certified Assisted Living Registrar, for, I guess, about four or five years at this point.
And you have experience working with seniors as well?
Yes, I have been working with seniors for the past twelve years with about a hundred-and-seventy-two residents. And that is what has really propelled me into looking to create this assisted living facility. I've lived in town for thirty years, and we really need one for our neighbors and friends.
Now, this facility is proposed to be a twenty-three-unit facility that could accommodate up to, I think, twenty-seven people. Is that correct?
Yes. We, this is going, we already went to the Department of Health, and they have all our soon, our plans, and actually we're quite excited.
Mr. Shammy, it's twenty-two units, correct, not twenty-three?
There was a slight modification in the most recent plans, because we originally had two hospice units, and I believe now we just have one, and one of those units became-
Well, there was an apartment back there, and they asked us to make it just one, and created a play lounge. The footprint is the same, but they didn't-
Who asked you?
The Department of Health.
Okay.
Okay, this is for the licensing of the building. So they eliminated that apartment, and so we created the one unit instead.
When you say apartment, you mean the hospice facility?
There was a little apartment that we were thinking that we could have, like a grounds person, security back there, and they said no.
Yeah, Tom, it was, I just reviewed that, as a matter of fact, today, the revised floor plan that came in, and there was an apartment, besides the twenty-two residential units, you know, for the individuals that are gonna be housed there, there was an apartment unit too. So let's just call that an apartment unit, as another living unit. They eliminate, completely eliminated the apartment unit. They rearranged some other spaces in there, which I guess, you know-
The Department of Health asked us, they actually went through our entire building, and with the architect, made some changes.
And the result was twenty-three residential units.
Plus two hospice units?
No, no. Twenty-three residential units, so twenty-three living units, as opposed to twenty-two residential units and one apartment.
Well, I'm confused with the hospice units, because-
Okay. The Department of Health does not want us to label one particular unit as a hospice per their regs. If someone would like to be able to be within the facility and has that, is needed, they do have the option of moving away from the resident for their peace, as well as their families. But we cannot label it as a hospice. They will allow us to move them per the resident's request, as well as family.
So just to clarify, there'll be twenty-three units. If someone is at end-of-life, they can use one of those units a little bit more isolated, perhaps?
That's right. There's a small area there that, if anyone has ever been through that with a family member, you want that.
Now, one component of the plan is that you wish to move the existing residence, which is kind of in the center of the site now, and utilize it, move it to a different location on this site, correct?
Yes. There's a house there that is from the old Clark farm. Apparently, there used to be this beautiful farm there at one time. And through time, housing developments have occurred and whatnot. And it is beautiful inside. It's all mahogany, and we're hoping to be able to save it. And we put it on, and they do it down in the beach areas. We actually can move homes, and we already received some estimates on some contractors that say that they can move this house for us, and actually, I make a joke of it, but in my reality, I'm not an engineer, able to put wheels somehow and actually, they fling it across, and can actually move it to, you know, be a home that's on actually on twenty-seven, instead of being so far set back.
And this home you intend to utilize as a residence, either for yourself?
Yes, that home would be for my husband and I, who are the administrator of the building, or hoping that the Arden, that we have, the full-time Arden, would live there as well, that they'd be so close next to the facility. For management.
Just a question. I'm assuming then that if the board were to act favorably on this application, you would agree to a condition that that home could not be rented out to any other third party?
No, that's not, yes.
That it would be used only for occupancy by an administrator, or by a nurse, or someone that-
Someone's connected to that building, yes.
Thank you. Anything else that I've neglected to bring out for you, that you want to mention to the board?
At this point in my life, as I become a middle-aged woman, I, and this has become my purpose, and that I feel that the people that are within middlesex care benefit from having such a well-fought-out facility. And as you look through it, you will see, we put a piece of ourselves, each one of us that walked on this, of what someone that is disabled or elderly would enjoy, and make their life and be a sense of, better, and have a sense of community and family, and not be so lonely any longer, that they would have a family. Okay? And if approved, the Department of Health smiled at me and said, you know what? We will be the first in the state of New Jersey that would be the smallest assisted living exclusive. It will be very beneficial to anyone that looks to be able to have their family member needs their family member to have some excellent TLC.
Very good. I have no further questions.
Chairman, I got a couple of questions here. Ms. Selby, how many employees are going to be on staff here?
Well, there's not gonna be a lot of employees, because there's not gonna be a lot of residents. So there's going to be probably a one-to-four ratio, and that is probably no more than six, and I would be including myself.
Six employees is maximum?
Maximum, but, you know, it depends on the conditions of the residents. You know, you have some residents that might look to be able to live there, that do not need as much as others, so.
Who would the employees consist of?
Well, we'd have a full-time Arden, we'd have a full-time administrator, I call myself Carl Friday, okay? And then we would also have some certified aides, and-
How many certified aides?
I guess we would have about three to four.
And that would vary by the time of day, am I correct?
It would vary by the time of day. In the evening, I wish you wouldn't have many employees there at all.
Alright, and, well, I'm assuming your architect's gonna provide information about what these interior apartments are gonna look like, but I'm assuming, do they have kitchens?
They have, they don't have a kitchen kitchen. They have a efficiency, they just have a microwave.
Alright, what about their meals then? Where do they, where do they take their meals?
When you get to see the concept of the building, it's going to be something that they'll be getting meals at the area near the kitchen, that they'll even be able to help prepare some of them if they'd like, as well as the sunroom, but they also can have meals in the room if they'd like.
But you're gonna have a ki- do you have to have a kitchen staff?
Correct.
Alright, how many kitchen staff will you have?
We'll have a cook, one.
One cook, and you're gonna have some janitorial staff there as well? I just wanna kind of pinpoint how many employees you're gonna have. I think it's important.
Yeah, well, there's not gonna be any more than six.
Okay.
And this is not a hundred-unit facility. This is, this is-
You've already given us three to four certified aides, one cook, one administrator, and one full-time Arden, so that's six. We haven't gone to groundskeepers, we haven't gone-
We haven't had a landscaper.
You haven't, you haven't, I'm sorry, ma'am?
A landscaper.
A landscaper. You haven't, you haven't discussed any activities, you haven't discussed any janitorial services. Is that gonna be extra employees? So you've given us six with just what I'm gonna term the-
It's such a small facility, okay? That's why I have a team here with me, with my consultant, and I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, okay? Is that the aides are going to be able to help be able to maintain the facility as well. This is like a big house. This is not like a facility that you've walked into, that you've seen other, you know, family members might have been in. This is just, this is going to be a large home with a number of bedrooms, that we're all gonna be living as a communal family.
Yeah. We have another witness, Karen Stratoti, who actually teaches the course for certification for assisted living, and she may be able to elaborate in greater detail as to the personnel needs of a facility of this size, which will be consistent with what Ms. Selby indicated, but she'll be able to explain how that will work with probably a maximum of six at any one time.
Ms. Selby will be the day-to-day operational person, correct?
Correct.
So it may not be six total, but it's six at any one time. Is that a correct analysis of what you just said?
Yeah, that's my understanding from speaking.
So there may be a pool of more, but at any given time, there will be six?
Right, I don't, Mr. Chair, it's, if I'm understanding, each one of these units is, I assume, one bedroom units is one bed, one person per room?
Yes.
And we have a one-to-four ratio, so I would think excluding, excluding the nurse and the administrator, there's six there. So then you have the nurse and the administrator, which make eight, then you have the cook, which makes nine, then you have whatever number of janitorial services, and I don't know if there's other aides, which would be increased. So I'm not certain if six is that number, and-
Yeah, that's fair. We'll have to hear from-
Yeah, I think we need to hear from the operational person, because she's gonna be the person that's giving us managing the place day-to-day, and not, and not the consultant.
Well, that's why we hire consultants, to be able to ensure that we're always able to comply with what needs to be given. This will be the first time in the state of New Jersey that we have a facility of this size.
Is the consultant gonna be there on a daily basis?
She'll be a phone call away.
Are there manuals and procedures created for the operation?
We're doing that, yes.
So you don't have them created?
We need to be able to create that for the Department of Health.
When you're done with this witness, she'll be my next witness, because there seems to be a lot of interest in what she has to say.
I'm more interested, Mr. Shammy, in the operations person, in her management of the facility. And if your next witness isn't gonna be the person dealing with the day-to-day activity and running the facility, I would like to hear that from the person with, because to me, that's the person-
Yeah, let me potentially, maybe, Mr. Tom, if this is a concept, then maybe we wanna hear from the person who's creating the concept, and then work backwards to the operation. Is that, you know, it may not be as fully developed as we would like to see it. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Can I ask, there's twenty-two or twenty-three units, as we've previously discussed. Each unit houses only one individual, or might there be more than one individual in each unit?
Well, meaning with the Department of Health, there was twenty-three units that were created, because we got rid of that apartment. And they also asked us to be able, just to make four of the units available per the square footage for two people in the event that there was couples. So that is an absolute total maximum of residents living there of twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
But usually, there's not couples that are assisted living, but they asked us to do that.
Do you, are these aides, the certified aides, are they there twenty-four-seven?
The Department of Health asked us to be able to fulfill the regulations, and that would be two, in the middle of the night, there's always has to be two people that are there to ensure the health and welfare of the residents.
So is it fair to say, when you say the middle of the night, you mean from-
I apologize, I missed what you just said.
From twelve AM to six PM, the ratio would drop from a four-to-one ratio to a one-to-thirteen ratio?
At the maximum capacity?
Well, that's, that's-
Yes. There would be two people there, and then you'd have, hopefully, the person that's the administrator on site.
And would you have a twenty-four-hour registered nurse, or the registered-
They'll own call twenty-four hours. That's why we're hoping to be able to have a house there.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one other question. What about resident vehicles? In other words, I understand somebody may have requirements to stay in an assisted living, but they still could drive. Are you going to-
The state of New Jersey still says that, you know, that they can drive.
Alright, my question.
But most people that are in assisted living, per Karen, when she gives her testimony, do not drive.
Okay. And again, that would be obviously something that, you would put some type of condition in your lease or contract with the patient that they're not allowed to have a vehicle to park on this site?
We would look to not encourage them to drive. I don't know if I can force them to not drive, but it would be very much encouraged not to.
Well, here's the problem. I guess if you were to, if they, if you didn't encourage them, and they wanted to have a vehicle, you could conceivably have twenty-three vehicles, resident vehicles parked on site.
Without the employees.
Without the employees.
Right.
It's more than seven vehicles.
It's more than thought that I think you have to think through.
We'll be able to present testimony that statistically, I might have a better chance to win the lottery than for all twenty-three.
I agree. It's not likely, but I think it's food for thought.
Consider it.
I think, I think, I think I like Mr. McGrath's suggestion. Perhaps we start with the consultant, and maybe we can revisit with Ms. Selby at a later subsequent, maybe that would be okay?
Yeah. You have to come back to this.
Yeah, because I honestly, I still don't have a grasp as to the operation of what is to occur there. I don't know what services are gonna be employed. I don't know the administrative, I'm assuming the administrator's gonna be required to live on staff. So I think we need to know all of this stuff in terms of-
And you'll know momentarily. We can get it up here. Any other questions for-
I think we're gonna reserve.
Yeah, this is the right thing, ever, ever back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to call Karen Stratoti to testify. Karen, do you want to go over here?
You know the routine, Karen.
I swear.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, selfie God?
I do.
Alright, please state your name, spelling your last name, and professional affiliation for the record.
S-T-R-A-T-O-T-I. First name's Karen, K-A-R-E-N. I'm a registered nurse, long-term care administrator, assisted living administrator, and adult medical daycare administrator. And I've been teaching the course with the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-five for assisted living administrators. Jean's a little bit shy as to discussing, you know, what she does now, but she's been dreaming about this facility for five years. We've been discussing it. In New Jersey, as well as any other place in America, the population by 2020 is going to triple with sixty-five and older. And what's happening in your community is you don't even have an assisted living. The only alternative is to go to a nursing home. So right now, she's working with a hundred-and-seventy-some people, a hundred-and-seventy-some people, and what she's seeing on a daily basis are people that are living independently, that are struggling and struggling and struggling. They need assistance with bathing, grooming, dressing, toiletting, maybe transferring to and from doctor's appointments, and that's what assisted living does. We take people out of independent living, or living alone, or maybe living with a family member, that the family member's at the dead end of their wits. I don't know if you all had a mother or father that your wife or your spouse said, oh my God, you know, I can't do this anymore. But that's what happens, and people do bring their mother or father to see the assisted living. In Jean's case, I was at the State Department of Health survey review with her, and Barbara Goldman, in charge of licensure, did say, do you realize that this is gonna be the cutest, smallest assisted living in the state of New Jersey? And we did this on purpose, because we don't like, I don't like, and I've been teaching it for a long time, the assisted livings, they're a hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-bed facilities, because elderly people get lost. They get lost in system, and they just don't even know where their rooms are. We wanna bring people together and have a community. Now, we talked a little bit about your administration and what's gonna happen. You're gonna have one administrator that's full-time, and Jean's gonna be living on the premise. You're gonna have one Arden that's full-time, forty hours a week, in the building, and then on-call twenty-four-seven, and that's typically what happens.
Slow down, just-
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to take notes in here.
Go ahead. Just tell them to stop when you need to stop. I'm a nurse, and this is just me. Okay, so we're gonna have the nurse, we're gonna have, the nurse has to go out in assisted living regulations, and they have to assess the need of the person wherever they're living. And if that person doesn't meet the criteria, let's say they've had a massive stroke, and they are incapable of even moving from side to side, that's not a person that Jean would most likely take into her building. The person that she would take into her building is someone that is walking, possibly with a walker, or a four-prong cane, they've already been through rehab, or it could be a person that has some problems with their bathing, their daughter or their son notices that, you know, they're just not clean, as clean as they should be, or they're shaving. They need assistance with medication management, because a lot of the elderly people go to various doctors, we call it doctor shopping, and all of a sudden, they're taking twenty pills a day, and they shouldn't be, the doctor forgot to take away the old pills. And so we try to keep people as healthy as possible in the assisted living. The average age of a person moving into an assisted living is anywhere from eighty-two to eighty-five years of age. The average length of stay in the assisted living is about three to five years, okay? Now, that doesn't mean that three to five years, when the person's now eighty-five, they're now ninety, that Jean's gonna throw them in. The philosophy of assisted living in the state of New Jersey is to allow that person to age in place until death. And I heard you ask about hospice earlier. What happens in- What happens in assisted living is, this is considered their home. They know their own furniture in there. Their pictures are up on the wall. They have a little kitchenette set up there. They're going to eat their meals together with the remainder of the people that are there. The staff becomes like family members to them. They do activities there. They have gardens out back. Most of these people will not, many of them will not ever go out of that building unless they have an employee with them or a family member with them. Because they need assistance. Some of them need assistance to get in and out of a car, in and out of a van. Jean will be, as the administrator, the coordinator of all of these things. Now, again, I'm going to say, she's already coordinating 170 people in a senior independent living, you know, community right here. And she sees, and I say to her, you know, you're really burning yourself out here because I know what she does for these people. So we're trying to set it up in such a manner that the people that move in feel safe, feel secure, they feel that their needs are paying attention. I always refer to it when we teach the class of cheers. Anybody here ever see Cheers on TV? Some guy walks in the bar and he says, "Hey, how you doing, Stan?" Everyone knows your name. When assisted living, the nurse, the aides, all look at the person on a daily basis, and they can tell. I mean, I can look at any of my clients and I can tell if their feet are swollen up, if they're talking with a list today, if their one eye is a little bit closed, the other eye's a little bit bigger, you know, if they're sluggish, if they're sad. And at that point in time, when you know these people, you can take the medication management and you can take what's going on with that person and you address it. So it never gets to the emergency room and never gets them put into a hospital or put into a nursing home. So hospice care, if someone is dying and they have cancer, and I've had people do this, they come in, they put themselves in assisted living because they don't want their children to have to deal with the cancer. And they know it's going to be difficult for them. They will come in and they will use that assisted living, and then at the time where they feel that they really need more care than what our aides can give them, we go to an outside hospice agency. Because hospice is covered 100% through a home health agency. That's Medicare. It's different than what assisted living is. Jean's assisted living is private pay, but it's 10% of her people have to be acceptable for Medicaid. So if someone comes in and spends down three years, she still can keep them. The state mandates that within three years, you must accept 10% Medicaid. So her goal is not to throw people out, it's to keep them aging in place until death. So that's where hospice fits in. If somebody goes and fractures a hip, and they come out of the hospital with a pinned hip, and they need PT or OT, that type of thing, we correlate physical therapy and occupational therapy right into their apartment. And they walk up and down the halls, and they might do jazz exercises, you know, we have all different kinds of exercises to keep people going and going and going. So assisted living is, it's maybe a new concept to your area, but what is typically happening is the larger companies are putting up 150, 250-bed facilities. This is a cute little compartmentalized assisted living. As far as staffing, you've got your administrator, you've got your RN, and typically, on the day shift, you're going to have at least two aides, and they're certified nurses aides. They have to go through a 90-hour course. If they're home health days, they go through a 120-hour course. In assisted living, we're allowed to accept either type of aide.
What is the patient, the patient-to-employee ratio requirement?
The requirement?
The patient-to-employee...
It depends on the level of care of the patient. So let's, let's say you have 27 people. Typically, 30% of the people have needs with bathing, grooming, dressing, toiletting, transferring. So what we've set up, you can set up any ratio, but we've set up on day shift, and we count the administrator and the RN.
I understand.
We set up a 1:4 or 1:5 ratio on day shift, if we go to 100%, which is 27 residents. But those two-bed rooms are typically for two sisters, and we've had that happen, they move in together, a husband and a wife. We've had brothers and sisters move in together. Because they can't afford to live on the outside and they have no way of getting their food, no way of getting their medicine. So that's what the facility takes care of.
Let me, let me stop. You said you provide assistance with meals and daily activities. Now, we're including, we're including the administrator and a registered nurse.
And you have administrator, RN, two aides.
Having the ability to visit many, many facilities. I can tell you at mealtime, that two people will not be enough people, excluding the nurse and the administrator. Because I've never, allow me, I've never seen the administrator or the registered nurse help and assist patients during mealtimes. I've always only seen aides.
Can I ask what type of facility you've visited?
I've visited assisted living facilities.
Large ones or...
Medium-sized ones, medium-sized ones to my profession. Large ones, medium-sized ones, not 22, I don't think I've ever been to a 22 facility one. But I'm talking number of people in care. And what I've witnessed is one certified aide assisting four individuals with meals at a given time. I've never witnessed, and this is me, and if you're telling me different, I'll accept it. I've never witnessed the RN or administrator assist in the administration of meals and hygiene. I've never...
This is what we're doing here. This is a universal worker philosophy. Everyone's trained to do everything. The administrator helps out, and I've got news for you, I've got 22 people that come to Christmas dinner, and I'm the only one serving everybody. So typically, in an assisted living, these people don't necessarily need you to cut up their meat or anything like that. It's like they're going to a restaurant. They're going to be dressed up, there's going to be beautiful music playing. The nurses aides, as well as the administrator and the nurse, are all going to assist in cooking. This is very different and unique than what you're used to going to. Because, trust me, I go, I was a summer assisted living consultant for five years, and I went to all 35 buildings, and I know what is out there. I've been a nurse to senior living, I've done a numerous amount of senior care facilities. This is a unique, based on what we call greenhouse, which is a tiny little house, we're trying to change the way senior care is being done. And this is a whole unique philosophy. So everyone is taking care of everyone. And yes, nurses do give care. I've given care. If I can scrub a toilet, then he can scrub a toilet. That's how we're going to look at this, okay? We all take care of each other. Do you have a question?
Just a quick question on one example that you had stated with the hip surgery.
Mm-hmm.
Hip problem, came in and got pinned and went there. Wouldn't normally a person like that go to like a rehab facility, like St. Lawrence Rehab or something like that?
They could, they could, but they don't have to.
I guess then the question that I'm asking, you're saying is they could also come here?
They can come here.
And could they be very short time? Could they occupy a room, say, for two weeks?
No, because, no, because what we're talking about is persons already living there. This is their home.
Oh, okay.
So when they go to the hospital, they're already broken head, okay?
I don't think the market, we're...
Right. We're not talking about a short-term less...
They were injured while they were already a resident.
Right, yeah.
So I completely off-base.
Is there going to be a rehab room at the facility?
No, we're going to do rehab right in their apartments, like they would have it done right in your independent living.
And in terms of equipment, we're...
Equipment will be brought in for them. My mother fractured her hip. She came to my house. I had PT and OT there every day.
My question, so there will be no equipment, rehab equipment on the site?
Rehab equipment will be brought in uniquely and individually for each person that needs it.
Nothing will be stored on the site? There won't be a...
Only in their rooms if they need it.
There will be a rehab room.
Right.
So the physical therapist or occupational therapist would then be coming to the site?
Correct.
Which would, again, I guess, create a parking number concern that we would have to consider in terms of...
I don't see, well, typically, if you have 27 people that may be living here, you may have four people that drive.
That's a different issue.
I mean, a part of what, please, please understand, we're, we, at this stage, what we're trying to do is get an understanding of what a day in the life of this property is going to do, so that we can more accurately understand some of the logistic needs from a zoning perspective.
Is there a doctor on staff?
Right, we're struggling to understand your concepts, but we're also translating those concepts into concrete zoning issues. So that's what our task is.
Every resident has their own doctor?
Yes, they do.
So we don't have, we don't have a doctor on staff?
No, every resident's entitled to have their own doctor.
Do we, do, who makes arrangements for doctors?
It could be the facility or the family members that are connected to that resident.
Do the doctors come to the facility or do we transport?
Usually, the person's transported to the doctors.
Are we going to provide, is our facility going to provide transportation?
Yes. There's going to be a small venue for transport.
How many, how many vehicles are going to be at the facility? One?
And that'll be utilized for activity programming if they do an air trip.
Okay, so there'll be one, there'll be one van on site?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I guess, do we know how many passenger van that would be?
It's usually a six to eight passenger van, wheelchair accessible.
Will it be, in addition to the two, the two RNs, and, I'm sorry, the RN, the two aides and the administrator and Ms. Selby, and I'm assuming Mr. Selby's going to be there also, correct?
Well, he works. I think he's going to be in New York working.
Yeah, he's going to live in the house. Are we going to have a driver to operate the van, or is one of the...
Usually, the activities person will be the driver operating the van.
So we are going, we are going to have, we are going to have activities at the site?
Yeah, absolutely, every day.
So will there be an activities director?
The activities director is going to be someone that will probably come in four hours a day, minimum in the day shift, and perhaps an hour to an hour in the head from the evening. Because people that are in assisted living typically want to go to bed by 8 o'clock when they're still watching something on TV.
What, what type of activities would be at the site?
You're going to bingo, you're going to have making flowers, you're going to have arts and crafts, you're going to have painting, you're going to have a whole bunch of things. And they may create an Italian dinner together. Really, truly. I had one group that went out and picked apples on an air trip and came back in, and we had apples all week. Everybody went to bathroom very well then. But this is what we try to do, is to connect them with what they're used to. And activities is a big part of their programming, you know? And anybody that has any kind of specialty, we've had artists that have been in these buildings, we've had people that know how to crochet and knit, and they start their knitting clubs, they play bingo together, they play cards. If there's a couple guys, if they're veterans, they have the vets, you know, that they can go out to and visit. We have Super Bowl Sunday parties and things like that.
I think, I think Ms. Selby testified there was going to be a cook on the site. One cook?
Well, we were talking about that. We had nurses, the nurses aides were going to be the cooks. We have to have a dietitian that prepares all the menus, and we were going to have a contract with an area store, and we were going to purchase the items and have it delivered to the facility once a week. And the kitchen would be big enough to be able to cook for 20-some people.
How many hours a week is the dietitian going to work?
Dietitian's only quarterly, eight hours a quarter, to review those types of people. Many of the people are not on any special diet. There's a general geriatric diet that they're put on, and quite frankly, I agree with that because when you're 85, you want to eat what you want to eat. You know, we don't force people to stay on diets, they always have a choice as to what they want to do. We also have a pharmacology consultant that comes in once a quarter, and he reviews every chart once a quarter. And he will direct, you know, as to whether to contact a doctor, and they need some lab work occasionally, bring people out to the labs, so...
Mr. Chairman, I, if I have, I just have a question and a comment, and I'll ask the question, then I have a comment for Mr. Shammy. I want to follow up on the cook. Did I hear you say that the aides are going to be the cooks?
Universal worker, yeah.
All right, let's, let's...
The aides are the cooks.
All right. If your aide is going to be your cook, how is your aide then providing nursing care services to patients? And now I'm going to, now, there has to be a great deal of transparency with the number of employees. It's very important because you have a limited number of parking spaces. I know, Mr. Shammy, you've seen our staff report from our professional engineer about concerns about parking. I'm going to request that you provide us with a detailed list of what type of employees are going to be on this site, what their functions are going to be, and what days they're going to be there. I mean, that's fine, if the dietitian only has to, has to be there eight hours a quarter, that's fine. But according to my count, you have an administrator, you have an RN, you have two aides. Now I'm hearing you have an activities director.
Yes, you do.
All right? And now I'm hearing that you're not going to have a cook, but you're going to have the aides doing that. If that's your operations model, that's fine. I'm not sure that, and if the state has no issue with that...
State has no issue with that.
I'm kind of surprised at that.
Because a 1:4 to 1:5 ratio is not what's happening.
I understand the fact of the...
Typically, it's a 1:15 ratio.
You're providing meals for 22 rooms.
Correct, correct. I do it every Sunday, trust me. And I cook and I clean. But I'm trying to explain, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you, I really am not lying.
Well, no, you're not going to be, you're not disrespectful, but there needs to be transparency.
Absolutely. We have to be transparent. All of our staffing ratios and all of our staffing salaries and everything, we're giving them to the State Department of Health. So we do have all that.
One other, I have...
We have everything listed. We have to have policy procedures and everything. Every job description has to be explicitly spelled out. So when we say the activities person's doing activities, but also the driver at times to the air trips or doctor's visits, things like that, it's all scheduled, but it's also written in the job description.
Okay.
Because we have to meet the criteria of both the federal and the state.
And I want to know at the next hearing, how many employees will be there on a daily basis, okay?
Four, six, seven.
That's what we need to know, all right? Now, I also heard you make one other comment, was that with 27 people, maybe you'll have four people that will have cars. And that follows up to my question to Ms. Selby, that I guess somebody could have a vehicle and living in this facility.
The only, what we do is when we do an initial assessment to bring someone to the facility, we also assess whether or not they can handle a car. If there's vision problems, if there's issues, a lot of times, families do not want to deal with it. But I'm going to be the ones to take the keys away from mom and dad. In one facility, I actually had a guy that would come, and he had a very old-fashioned Cadillac, and he wanted to shine it up every day. It wasn't so much that he wanted to drive it, he wanted to show it to everybody every day. So we did allow him to park his car and shine it up, and we pulled one of the transmitters and he wasn't able to drive it.
Yeah, Karen.
Yes.
If I understood Ms. Selby's testimony, the state does not allow you to forbid vehicles.
People have a choice.
Correct.
But if we have a doctor's note...
Yeah, no, but I'm, my next follow-up question, so since they, since you have, by state mandate, you're not entitled to have a car washed, forbidding a senior to own it, possess a car, and that's not legal.
Correct.
But if I'm understanding you correctly, there are individual assessments. Does the state permit your licensed, registered nurse or aide to render a judgment that then can be passed on to perhaps a physician? I don't know the procedure, but this, that would at that time forbid that person to have access to a vehicle.
Yes, they do.
So you cannot start with that procedure, that's a violation of state law.
No, we do start with the assessment.
Right, but you can start with an assessment, and based on the assessment, you are entitled
Right, but you can start with an assessment, and based on the assessment, you are entitled for specific reasons to restrict a resident's ability to possess a vehicle.
Correct. And typically, the way you do that is you notify the family that's involved, they take the person to the doctor, we do a mini mental exam, and we also do other exams on people, visual, hearing, things like that. And then the doctor approves it, and the doctor writes a note that they're no longer allowed to drive. And the doctor notifies the driving, the DMV, and they take away their license. People aren't too happy about that, that they are, it's dangerous, you know, it's dangerous at times.
What I, what I'm taking out, and I think this is probably the correct answer, that cannot be a criteria of your admissions. You can't say, to be enrolled in my facility, you're not going to be able to operate a vehicle.
What we can say is, if the doctor's determined that you're unable to use your car.
But it can't be a criteria.
No, it's not a criteria, you have to evaluate everyone.
By you.
Correct. No.
No, but I, I, I understand it, I just want.
Yeah, but that's the point, is I think it's against the laws of the state, it's like you can't have that.
To be clear, you can't do that as, as, as the administrator.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to be very direct.
But I think what happens is that the two things kind of go hand in hand. If you're a person who needs assisted living, then you may also be a person who's incapable of driving. It's not far-fetched that those two things go together. And that's why when Ms. Stritodi indicates, you know, four or five people having a car out of 23 residents, she's not, well, she can tell you, but I don't believe she's pulling those numbers out of the air, it's based on her experience working in and managing assisted living facilities for many years, and I guess you can elaborate upon that.
Yeah, and my husband and I.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is it fair to say, once you're at maximum capacity of 27 people, I'm assuming 27 people based upon Ms. Selby's prior testimony, we have four rooms that, that are going to be two persons rooms, so that comes to 27 people. The number of employees under one to four ratio would be seven, correct?
No. We're going to have, we must have a medication aide on evening shift, a medication aide on night shift, and another aide on both shifts, so that's two, four. On the day shift, you're going to have the administrator, the RN, you're going to have two aides, possibly three, plus an activities person. Okay, so you're going to have six, potentially five in the beginning until you start throwing up.
I thought you said the activity person is only three hours.
It, it is. But it could be, it could be part-time the day shift, part-time the evening shift.
I, I thought the testimony earlier was we're going to have a one, but for the evenings, we're going to have a one to four ratio. Again, I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay, by one to four ratio, you're including.
Well, individuals, absolutely.
Your administrator.
When I include, and, and, and let's, I guess, let's go, let's do times, let's start there, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. What would the ratio of employee to patients be? What's your proposed ratio?
All right, what I'm proposing is a one to four, one to five starting ratio. On the evening shift and night shift, it's not that.
Let's, let's go from six to six right now, so that would be one to four. So we're at seven. So we're at seven people there, in my mind, and tell me if I'm wrong, in my mind, that would be seven people on staff from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
No. Because you're not going to have activities the whole time, okay? That person's.
I think, yeah, actually, again, Mr. Bodie, one of the other things you have to consider is you're going to have overlap between your two staffs.
Uh huh.
Because I don't think, you know, you know, when you're.
And it depends too on their levels of care. If someone gets up and showers themselves, grooms himself, comes out dressed for breakfast, and just goes to the activities, we may have that kind of a person. We may have someone that needs to help with bathing their backs, you know, washing their hairs, things like that.
Maybe the better question, instead of trying to like interpolate, you know, timeframes and what, the simple question of asking, at any given time, any given moment, what's the maximum amount of people that can be there?
Employees.
Employees.
Yeah, no, this, yeah, because, yeah, I think that's the right question, because it's beyond the scope of this board to decide what is the appropriate ratio, right? I mean, that is, if the state says this is appropriate, we are going to defer to that. What we have to do is translate that to how many cars are going to show up, right?
Correct.
And so.
So you've got the administrative living.
So, no, no, wait, Mr. Sacks asked that we have a written explanation of that. I, in order to avoid confusion for our next meeting, we need to have that in writing, right? If you, if you already submitted this to the state, the state has already approved it, in terms of its strategy, in terms of its applicableness to the type of residence you're going to be having, then what we would like you to do is translate that into a document that says, okay, at any given moment, this is the maximum number of employees who would need to be driving up to the facility and being there. Because that's really what our question has to be.
What I thought we might do to address your concern is, the next time we come here, we'll have a typical weekly schedule, 24 hours for seven days in the week.
That would be helpful.
To show how the workforce will change over time in terms of the other shifts, and then I think the board would also be able to see, you know, the, the height of the greatest number of employees present, and when that concentration would take place.
Very helpful. In addition, I'm going to recommend also, when we get to the parking traffic issues, obviously, if there's enough assisted living facilities, both in New Jersey and beyond, that there will be some kind of documented percentage, right? Not, not anecdotal testimony. Can we get validated documented percentages of the number of residents in an assisted living range? At, what percentage of those peoples actually have vehicles in their possession? So it can't be anecdotal.
I, I don't, I don't believe any of those statistics exist, I'll be honest with you.
All right, then, then we need, then we need to hear that, all right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, see.
That may, that may be legitimate.
Because it really hadn't been a problem.
We have to know that. Because then we have to decide what are the criteria we would use to a diet.
We had an evaluation, we did a Villarreal facility further down south, it was a 72-bed facility, with 20 parking spaces for 72 beds. Out of the 70 people in there, there's only five people that drive.
Right.
Okay, they do have visitors and things like that.
So someone can validate that, that's enough evidence for us.
Okay, I can get that out of there now.
We need that validated by someone qualified to make that, and I realize you were trying to say something, Mr. Selby, but we need to keep ourselves on line, so I'm looking forward to hearing from you, but probably not right this minute. So here's our dilemma, folks. We wanted to end this meeting close to 10 as we possibly could. We want to give the public opportunities, but I'm not certain that we've given the public enough to comment on.
I still have, I don't, I.
Yeah.
Could I ask one question of Mr. Bodie? Bodie says, how you say?
About is fine.
About. When we talk about 6:00 A to 6:00 PM schedule, you're talking about a typical nursing home or hospital schedule?
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
I'm just, I just want to understand, when we do assisted living, depending on the needs of the people, we don't help them or assist them unless they get up at certain hours, we find out what is their schedule. So we may be bringing in an aide at 6, because we have three people that need to be dealt with at 6, we may be bringing another aide in at 9, and the aides will work over shifts so that they are having more help at the dinnertimes. I hope that explains it to you.
It does, it does.
On the evening and on the night shift, mandatorily, we have to have at least one certified nurse aide and one other person in the building. We've chosen to have two certified aides, one being a medication aide, plus a nurse that's going to be on the property side. So that's the mandatory. We're going beyond the mandatory.
Right.
Okay, so you're aware.
Right, what I talk, I'll use the term now, because I didn't want to use it before, but worst case scenario, for lack of a better word, say there's an activity going on there, say there's people who need immediate care there, say there's, it's during the dining hour where there needs to be people there, you may have to staff accordingly.
Yes.
And the maximum amount of people that are going to be there at that particular time for all those events, I think is what the board wants to say.
Probably seven from my camp.
And I think she can only provide for us, Mr. Peretti, the maximum amount of people that they anticipate employing, because there are other caveats that are going to be outside, outside their.
If we have a special event, if we have a Halloween or a Christmas party or whatever, we bring an extra help physical Thursday.
Typical, a doctor.
Yes.
Right.
We call PRN staffing, so we have staff that are certified aides that we will pull in and pull in as needed.
And then based on your experience, you can say typically, here's, you know, here's a scenario.
I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Sacks, and I hope, I think that what we right now need is to get a grasp of the mechanism in terms of employees and what the employees are going to do, what the operations are. And maybe perhaps between now and the next meeting, we can, we can focus in on that and you can provide us that, and in a little, you know, and you've done, in my mind, you've clarified a number of my issues.
Do you want us to bring in the, our employee job descriptions and things like that?
That would be helpful, I would give some papers.
Because I have the policy procedures that are being done.
The state's already seen them.
Yeah.
So I know they exist, and that's why I'm asking you, we don't have to see the whole book, but that's beyond our scope. Yeah, it's, wait, way, way more information than we can understand. But what we need to do is distill that for us.
But I understand your questions, because you don't have an assisted living in your, I get it.
And, and you're already talking about a different model.
Yes.
So we're now struggling with models that don't relate to our typical experiences in the first place, which are minimal.
Right.
So what I, I would, would be very helpful, both for us and for the public as well, to distill what the state has agreed to, has validated, distill that for us into a practical flow sheet.
I only have one copy of this I brought with me, but this is our attachment that we made to our certificate of need, and this dispels everything you need to know about the regulations, what we're doing.
Why don't you provide that to Mr. Shammy, and Mr. Shammy will provide that to us?
Yeah. Okay. I didn't notice last night.
And we, look, we're pushing, we're giving you a hard time.
Well, you know, trust me.
We're trying to distill out.
It's important to understand. Yeah, I agree.
So that we can make an informed decision about the issues that we are legally responsible to evaluate.
Right.
And that's our concern, we have, we are responsible to evaluate certain things.
Right.
And so we need the right information to enable us to properly evaluate those issues.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
How many visitors typically come to visit?
Well, it depends, we may have some people that have no visitors, but we may have some people that may have two daughters that come in at once. A lot of the visitors come after work hours, so they'll be there in the evening if they're going to come. Not everybody comes every day, some people come once a week.
What about Sunday?
Some people once a month. Sundays, you may have some people visiting, it depends on the family unit, it depends on how far away they are from the families. I've seen people drive themselves in, truly, and just say, I don't have anybody, I'd like to live here, because they don't want to be alone.
What would you say the percentage of visitors that come every Sunday, let's say?
Maybe about.
Fifty percent?
No, 20 or 30 percent. Because people have lives, and, and when the people get to the point where they come into assisted living, a lot of times, people have tried to have their mom and dad at home and they're exhausted. So they take a break, and we try to encourage them to take a break so mom and dad can get adjusted to the community. Once we can get them into the community, they don't feel as guilty when they come and they visit. They might take mom out for an afternoon to go to the diner, you know, and then bring her back, and that's enough, she's had a, you know, a meeting with them.
Because I could tell you, you are more than professional, and clearly, you know what you're talking about.
I'm passionate about what I do.
You have, you have a lot of experience. But here's the number that's sticking in my mind, 20 parking spaces. Okay, let's say those 20 parking spaces are occupied, and then you have unexpected visitors come in, where are they going to park? Where are the rest of the people going to park? It's as simple as that, that's the question that's revolving in my head.
I understand what you're saying, I get it. I'm telling you, in my experience, you're never going to have those 20 parking spaces filled, you're not going to have it. People just don't do it. And unfortunately, it didn't happen in my family, my mother went into an assisted living, I was there every day. God, she called me at 3:00 in the morning thinking it was 3:00 at night. So I was the daughter that came every day, but not everybody comes every day. Some people come once a month, and it's, it's a wonderful thing that they can see their family once a month, because they live far away. Other people, they don't have anybody. So the community itself becomes their family. The nurses aides become their.
I understand that part.
Okay.
Perhaps, perhaps, you know, this, this may be, and I don't know if this exercise is possible, you said there's a facility that you could do some type of, and get provided with, with the number of cars patients have, perhaps you can give us some type of comparison with the percentages.
Now, this is a 15-year-old facility, so you're aware.
I understand, just with the percentages of people. Because quite honestly, from where I sit, I think, expecting you to, to give us a percentage of the, of the family unit that's going to visit their clients is almost impossible.
It is, because different families.
From where I sit, I think that, we're asking you to be a mind reader and project the future on patients and family that aren't members of your facility, and I understand that, but we need, we need to, we need to try to get some numbers together.
Oh, I'll get a study together.
And we will quickly, I mean, obviously, we still need to hear from the other experts that are going to be testifying.
That's correct.
The traffic expert who's going to give us.
Which we have not heard.
This type of use, and, you know, what the IT standards are, and what, we have not heard.
One more question.
Question that you're asking, and, and I know a lot of times that, you know, you scratch your head a little bit, time.
I can't, I can't expect, you can't, Mrs.
You're going to hear it anyway.
To give, to give us that.
No, I expect Mr. Kennel's going to give us that information.
I hope I answered a lot of your questions, and if you have more questions next time, just.
I just have one quick question.
All right.
I don't want to let you go yet, you know?
Oh, okay.
I'm really enjoying, this is very educational for me.
It, it is.
The question I have is this, let's say worst case scenario, okay? You have more cars than you have parking spaces, more visitors than you have parking spaces. Have you thought about other options of how you're going to accommodate the excess parking? I mean, that's probably a question for the engineer.
No, when you have a special event, there are times you'll use your bus to try to pick up people that are close by, to try to get them to come to the special event, because you may have a spouse that put his wife in there, because he can't handle her anymore, and he'd like to come, but he doesn't have anybody to drive him. So we've done things like that. We haven't really thought, because you don't know how many people would come to something like that.
We'll be able to also give you some statistics regarding other assisted living facilities.
Yes.
The number of beds in those facilities, the number of parking spaces, and perhaps we can also go a step further and get a letter from maybe the administrator of that facility that.
That would be hearsay.
So that's not going to work.
But if you, but if you do a parking study, perhaps, and I'm not telling you how to process the application, Mr. Shammy, but if you were to provide data from the number of visitors that occur on, and I would imagine Saturday or Sunday is probably.
Yeah, the highest is Saturday or Sunday if they're going to come.
Pick whatever the peak hours are at another facility, and give us some detail as to what the actual parking counts were with respect to visitors.
And do the ratio of what are those, are people with theirs versus theirs. We can do that.
Yeah, the, the number one thing we're concerned about, of course, is that should there be overflow, you cannot park on Route 27. Right, so that's, it's a danger to your residents and/or their visitors. So clearly, there needs to be adequate backup plan, because you can't have them stopping on Route 27, and that's just completely unacceptable. And so we need to navigate that, so some kind of.
There has been some talk, and we don't have it phrmed up yet, but there is an extra neighbor of theirs that has a dental, and he has parking.
Something like that, that was in writing and verifiable?
We haven't verified, but.
I'm thinking along the lines, based on when they come up with analysis, that there's potential banked parking available on-site. When I look at that plan up there, I see an area that potentially, you know, could be extended to add X amount of parking spaces to.
Right.
If during the analysis it turns out that, you know what, we're going to need a variance, okay? Could we lessen the degree of the variance by providing more parking spaces on-site?
And there's just one more thing, we did do this at one of my facilities, we had a church, that in Sunday afternoon, we were having a big event, and we rented the parking spot from the church.
A shared parking.
And if we had a shared parking situation, we'd have a contract, we're not there yet, that's what, okay, so we're all talking.
Now you're speaking my language.
All right, good. Because I didn't, you know, it's been a while since I remembered that, and it just sparked my memory. So I think that's, we want to make everyone comfortable, you know?
And you've got to keep everybody safe.
Absolutely. And we have to meet fire and safety regs, OSHA regulations, medical waste regs. We have a lot of regs to meet and federal and state and that's what we're going to do. Because we really want to make this a model. This is not going to just be here, they're paying one doing another six of those, I will say.
Okay. I heard Mrs. Selby's testimony and I think the communal aspect is very exciting.
Oh, it's new.
It sounds very exciting.
It's a place I would want to put my money. That's all I want to say.
It sounds as if a lot of thought has gone into the concept and I'm anxious to hear a little bit more about it, but.
Right.
All right, so here's what I'd like to do, Council, if it meets with your approval.
Certainly.
I want to let the public react. I mean, you folks have been sitting here for a very, very long time and I appreciate it. So if it's okay with you, Council, what I'd like to do is invite, open the public portion of the meeting. Invite the public to comment on what they've heard so far, all right? And I recognize that that's inadequate information and that we may not be able to respond to everything because we haven't said what needs to be said. But if you're comfortable with that, Council, I'd like to do that.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion to open the public portion of this meeting?
Motion to open the public.
Have a second.
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Folks, you have been here for a very long time and I realize that we haven't even said enough. But we are very interested in hearing your thoughts and your comments, so, but I'm going to limit it if I can to fifteen minutes, so I'm sorry. This is going to continue, right? So if you want to come up and make a comment, please come up to the front microphone. We have to swear you in and get your name in there.
Sir, please raise your, thank you. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, Subiyat.
I do.
Please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
Daniel O'Shea, O-O-S-H-E-A, fourteen fifteen Huron Road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Shea.
I'll make this very quick because I know a lot of people want to get up here. So two bullet points, traffic study and accidents. And from there, I'm going to say the distance between the traffic light at Cousins Road and the distance to the traffic light at Bennett's Road. I'm sure if you talk to your police force, it's a very dangerous area. So a traffic study, if could at all be worked out, to decide whether because of this new development coming in, would have to be either widened, a turn range, something like that. Accidents, just check with your police department over the last six months or the one year and see how many rear unders there are. Remember, directly across from the driveway of this facility is Kingsbury Acres in Somerset. A two-hundred-and-seventy-unit facility, two to three bedrooms each, maybe two cars each, five-hundred-and-forty cars. Excellent note on that. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea.
You know the routine, yes. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, Subiyat.
I do.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
My name is Garrick Stolt, S-T-O-L-D-T. I live at one Chipwood Lane, in close proximity to the proposed project. As a background, I've been in healthcare for thirty-seven years. I'm the chief financial officer at St. Peter's Healthcare System. Been involved in home care, homemaker services. We at St. Peter's provide the RN coverage for the retirement communities and seven of those retirement communities in Monroe have a lot of knowledge and background in the services. I commend the applicant and their consultant for the compassion they have to the elderly. We as a society don't do enough for them. That being said, I have significant concerns about, and I have four. The first one is what I heard tonight, is a new concept. And by the way, I'm all for new concepts in healthcare, but we have a problem here. The reason why assisted living facilities are eighty or a hundred, hundred and twenty beds, economies of scale. We talked about the fact that these patients can, or these residents can, are very mobile and they can get around, but they also age in place. And that means acuity of the patient gets much more difficult as they get older, more needs for those people. Although they may start off as being very viable when they have a commercial population, as they age in place, run out their assets, they become Medicaid. I can tell you right now, Medicaid is not profitable. They never cover the cost of care and that's a problem over a period of years. If you have a financial viable, a non-viable operation, that will close, it could close and then you have an arbitrist. Now you've got a commercial property that only has a specific use and can't be used for anything else. They'll find another commercial use for that property since now you've made that commercial from residential. I moved into North Brunswick because it was a community of families, not assisted living facilities, not commercial property. You're going to change the characteristics and high probability of lowering the property values around it, mine included. So changing the character of the neighborhood, the financial viability, and by the way, the Department of Health and DCA, which are the two major areas you have to go to get a project approved, do not approve or disapprove financial viability. They'll approve the concept, they'll approve, I can tell you of many, many projects that Department of Health has approved and DCA has approved, that became very financially unsuccessful. So they don't endorse the viability, financial viability of a project. They'll approve the space and the concept. And the fact that acuity goes up as people get older means more people going into that facility and as the other person just said, traffic is going to be a significant issue in addition to parking. And if you look at the Route 27, try going north on Route 27, from South Brunswick, past the Finnegan's Lane, all the way up to Bennett's Lane, it's a nightmare. And you do that at five o'clock in the afternoon, you're going from living in New Brunswick all the way down 27 past Cousins Lane. So traffic is a huge problem and adding a facility that's going to have more traffic is going to be very, very, very difficult. And the last thing is noise. You're going to have additional noise. If you go to Monroe and go down Applegarth Road, where you have all those retirement communities, that road is layered with cars parking on Applegarth Road where they're not supposed to park. It's not zoned for parking. Those people are parking on that, on that road to get into those retirement communities because there's not enough parking and they're aging in place. So there are significant issues that have to be addressed for this group to make a decision. I think there's a lot of questions about parking, about traffic, about viability and the whole change of character in neighborhood because going from residential to commercial. Now, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Thank you. Sir, please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, Subiyat?
Yes, sir.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and your address for the record.
Last name is Sable, S-A-P-L-E. First name is Vijay, V-I-J-A-Y.
Thank you.
And. Your address is one-four-zero-one Parillo Court, P-R-I-L-L-O. The next door.
Thank you.
So our house is the first house over there, what you can see exactly next to that property. It's on the right side or the left?
At the top of the picture.
Yeah, that's the one.
Got it.
So I think we are going to be the most impacted people in this whole thing. So when we bought this property at that time, that property over there where they are putting this structure, it has got, I think, maybe fifty, hundred, whatever number of rings and beautiful house over there. And it's a residential property. Based on that, we decided here it's a beautiful place, we have got the house next to that. Now I asked that question before and I came to know that this is going to change from residential to commercial. And though it will become commercial, it cannot be changed from assisted living to something else. But if it is getting changed from residential to commercial to assisted living, there is no guarantee down the line, ten years, it will not change from commercial assisted living to Wawa or 7-Eleven coming over there.
Okay, Mr. Sable, let me just respond. We're not changing the zoning here. The zoning is staying in place. What the applicant is requesting is a use variance from the zoning. That's essentially what the applicant's requesting. So the zoning is staying in place, but it's their right and their prerogative to request relief from this board. Now certainly, in order to achieve a use variance, it's a fairly substantial burden of proof that the applicant has to prove. It remains to be seen if that's the case. We haven't heard from their engineer, from their traffic engineer, from their planner, and that's obviously what will occur at the next meeting.
And in the case that Mr. Stolt had said was if the assisted living facility was to close or out of business and shut down, the only other use that could go in there would be another assisted living facility.
Correct, right. We're not changing the zone, we're changing the use of that property to allow assisted living, not to allow anything else. So, but it's a legitimate concern, but that's what the rules are.
But the first thing first, if I, if I, if this property is there and if I'm coming and trying to buy that house next to that, I will not buy that house. And I feel that none of the people over here, neither one, any of you, will go and buy that house where there is an assisted living community next to that because there itself, I'm having an issue saying that, hey, tomorrow, my property value is going to go down because you have already put up the, whether you call it commercial, whatever the zoning is the words are. I feel that already after we bought the house, our prices officially, whenever you go to the insurance, are anywhere fifty to twenty percent down than what we bought. We bought it at very high prices and twenty percent down. Because of this, if it goes down again, we have got sixteen houses surrounding that. You are going to impact those sixteen houses which they bought it at very high price. If you look at the communities around, the prices are anywhere between three-hundred-thousand to five-hundred-thousand. Our house prices starts from six-fifty plus when we bought it. So we are already twenty percent down. Below that if we are going, you're talking about all sixteen houses are already impacted with that. Second thing, as this gentleman said about the parking, and as we are talking about I knew this on that, there are only fifteen parking slots in the actual main thing and there are three or five on the emergency exit where they have, where the dumpster truck will be coming. If you have about twenty-seven people staying over there, no matter whatever, whoever is giving the statistics, I know that at any given time, those fifteen parking spots are on a daily basis full. So if there are any visitors coming, they cannot park it on twenty-seven, there's no way you can park it on twenty-seven. People are going to come into our community and start regularly parking over there as you mentioned. We have got the families ranging between twenty-five years to forty-five years. Everybody has got kids anywhere between one year to fifteen years. All these kids are on the street. All these cars coming in is going to be a big hassle. Right now, to get onto twenty-seven from Parillo Court, sometimes we have to literally wait two to five minutes. There is no light, nothing, just to get out of the, because of the traffic. You can imagine these fifteen or twenty cars coming in and parking on our street and people will give us all kinds of things. Oh, no, sir, this is the statistics. After, once you got the approval, no one is going to come and check. We call the cops. Cops say you are, your business say no parking anywhere. They said if you call us, we cannot come and tow the cars because there's no, there's no sign for the no parking. They haven't put the speed breakers on our street. So you can imagine the way people come in, they, most of the time, they miss the intersection. They come inside, they do the U-turns, and my house is the first one. My driveway is half gone because of people coming in and doing the U-turns on my driveway. So that is another thing. Next thing is retention basing. We have a retention basing for sixteen houses. And I'm not sure whether their retention basing is going to be connected to ours, but looking at that facility, I don't want the water to be coming inside our houses because that doesn't, I know that the engineer will be giving, oh, we have enough capacity, this that. When we built our sixteen houses, the people who are staying on the next road, which we know, they started complaining that their basement started flooding. Though we have got a big retention basing which is only full like one-four or half the capacity, still they get the backwaters from most of the houses what we have been built by the builder. So that will be another concern for us.
Sir, we're going to, you're going to have an opportunity to discuss the engineering testimony when the engineer testifies and their engineer will testify and those are very, very legitimate concerns for you to.
I just want to put up the point.
To address.
I need to finish it, but we get another.
Watch your movements.
This isn't your only shot.
This is, so.
I might want to put one or two points so that they can answer that.
This is only an opportunity for you to address. I know we heard some very limited testimony from the consultant and from the applicant, but this is just if you had any ideas or thoughts with respect to what was given us.
When she mentioned that eighty-one to eighty-five years is the age of the people staying over there and five of them driving on my street by mistake and the kids are on the road, you know, I don't want to be disruptive to the senior people, but you have heard so many incidences where the people are just going into the hotel like this, kids are playing. People will say, don't play on the street. Doesn't matter. This, if the people are driving at that age on our streets, we have a very much concern for our kids and we want their properties, not because this was a commercial property was where the people are coming in. Parillo Court is going to be full of parking lot, I know that it's going to happen when that happens. I have one more concern. Is there a nighttime curfew, not a curfew, but the noise coming from them as per the New Jersey rule, saying that a senior community does not make noise because?
Let me respond to that.
Yeah.
There are state laws that require that during the day, the measured noise at your property law, for instance, cannot exceed sixty-five decibels and in the evening cannot exceed fifty decibels. I don't believe this is a facility that's really a noise generator.
Not them, me.
Oh, you.
If I.
If you go.
I.
All right, let me clarify there.
If you find me, if I have people, it actually happens and I'm sitting in my backyard and talking to each other, if they disturb them and they go and call the cops, I'm in your trouble. And I don't know how to measure fifty and sixty.
Well, all right, let me show that stat then, all right.
So that is the thing. Another thing is my question to them, are they putting any kind of, these are the points I'm putting up so that they can answer these points. If you want to make notes, you can do that. Because I'm going to ask these questions again.
Let me go back to noise for a second.
Yeah, yeah.
You would not necessarily be considered a noise generator.
I am.
So you could make a lot of noise. No, but I will tell you this, if you do make too much noise and you get a complaint from a neighbor, which could be them, then you'd have to shut it down.
No, that's the thing is none of our neighbors will complain about your noise, but anyway, walls, are they going to put up any kind of walls surrounding this? We are not talking about barber wire walls because you are talking about eighty-one to eighty-five year old people. No, we want that wall. Why, I'm telling you, this is a senior people. Just think that you're talking about one percent to four people ratio, you have about six people. If someone is just wandering around on the streets on twenty-seven, they need to have that kind of thing there.
You're stating more than you are.
I'm just stating that because, and they can wander around in my property because if that barber wire is broken somewhere and they come in, if they have accident.
Your boss ran on your house, is that right? No, 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 he's concerned that the applicant.
Mr. Sable, I've got your concerns here. These are all very legitimate concerns. The reality is, all of these issues that you have addressed will in fact receive testimony from the applicant and they will be addressed. It is helpful for us to have them out here, but it's beyond the scope of what we can do right now to address them. But they will be addressed.
Yeah. Before you guys, you are.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Because you mentioned, I will quote what you said for the first case, this property will not be consistent with the neighborhood. That's what you mentioned in the first. I feel that is the case over here.
That's a fair.
That's what you, I'm quoting your own statement again.
I'm out of time.
I feel because we have said residential and this is going to be a commercial over there. And that's what, that's, that is our current point, which I will come up with more statistics later, but that's what I wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. All right, folks, we've gotten. If you all think he's too noisy, you ought to let him know now. We've heard from several of you, only a handful. We've kind of used up a little bit more time. Is there anybody here who needs, who would like to speak that has an issue that hasn't yet been addressed? All right, I mean, again, realizing that we're going to have more professional testimony, we're going to go through those, but I want to honor the fact that you have sat here since seven o'clock tonight. Yes, you may, but you have to come up here and do it legal or it doesn't, I'll get you as well. All right, last two people. You're different, so last three, go ahead.
All right, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, Subiyat.
I do.
Please state your name, spelling your last name and address.
Davis.
We didn't hear, sorry, say it again.
Davis.
Damon.
D-A-V-I-S.
Davis, Mr. Davis.
His name is Matthew.
First name?
Matthew.
Matthew, thank you.
I just have a quick question. I just want to know that will we be able to still ask some of the questions regarding some of the issues that we, that were heard here today when we meet again?
Well, absolutely. This isn't shut down, but this doesn't shut down the conversation. But I wanted to honor you as the public and try to fit it all in at one time. The first part of the meeting went way longer than we thought it was going to do, but you are not, you are allowed to have any conversation at future meetings.
That's a lot of what we wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we understand that and we respect that and, but so yes, you will have more opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quickly. Yeah, yeah, you can sit around, we won't tell. Ma'am, please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, Subiyat?
Yes.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
Yijun Chen, last name C-H-E-N. I'm living in one-four-one-two Parillo Court.
Give me your first name, ma'am.
Yijun Chen, Y-I-C-H-U-N.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The, I'm the second house on the way, which I'm gonna, they're gonna have an entrance in front of my house.
You're across the street from them?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, got it.
Yep, got it.
I just got a question. Do they have to have a road over there?
A driveway, you mean?
Yeah.
That's something that we will discuss with the engineering committee.
Yeah, that's open for discussion. That may be what is proposed, but it's, we haven't decided on that.
But when I bought it, it was a community without any additional road there, so which mean, I mean, I just wanted to know, that one can be changed anytime or...
Absolutely. Yeah, that, the whole way the building sits on the property, where you come in, where you go out, all of that is open for discussion here. We have not heard the testimony, and all of that will need to be evaluated.
Okay. Of course, as you know, if a house, I'm in my house, there is a new entrance over there, there is no one gonna...
It's an absolutely legitimate issue, and it will be addressed. All right, but it has not yet been addressed.
And you'll be able, when the engineer...
And when that, yeah, you can speak.
When the engineer comes and testifies about that and the plans, you'll be able to ask him some questions as we leave.
Yeah.
And we'll, no decisions have been made, so you'll have a chance to speak there.
Yeah. I got one more, quickly.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so be it. All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
My name's Yan Chen, last name's Chen, C-H-E-N. First name's Yan, and my address is 1473 Parillo Court, which is on all the way to Yan.
Okay.
So in a way, I'm least affected by it.
Right, right.
But still, traffic is a problem.
Sure.
In addition to all the concerns that were mentioned before, my only question is, but before I mention, you know, like I said, I like to, you know, what they do, I like to commend that as well, because my parents is over 70s too, so I can imagine the day that, one day in the future, I had to do something like this with. So I mean, I'm totally fine with the idea of what they do, but my only question is, why there? I mean, I know it's what they're asking, but look at the property, I mean, that thing screwing the parking up, is it even yard there? I mean, are you expecting people that are living there to stay in the facility all the time? I mean, if they go out, where can they go? Is it even yard there?
Well, I guess that's something we're gonna hear testimony.
And like I say, I mentioned, I mean, I'm not a security, but just in that, I mean, there are lots that are open, are much bigger, which I imagine would be much better for this year. Like 130, you know, that way past shop ride, plenty of space that, you know, suit, more suitable. And that's my only concern. There should be a lot of, you know, concern that we've brought up before, but just why there?
Thank you.
Have a motion to close the public portion of this meeting.
Motion to close.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Council, you want to say anything, closing statement?
No, not at this point, I don't think so.
Folks, let me quickly, if I might, just explain, you know, we live in an amazing era here in 2016. Democracy works slow and maybe oddly, but it works. And so let me please just explain how this works. They're, what they are asking to do is not permitted on that land. So they're asking us to gain permission to do something that's not permitted. So our task in evaluating that is to hear what they are planning, and then to evaluate what the building would look like and work like, and have entrance and access, and deal with all of those issues in order for us to say, is the use good? Is the specific application of that use a good use of that land? So we are, it's in a long process that includes many other professionals who have to give us their opinion. All right, so I realize this takes a lot of time, but you should be encouraged, this is not a rubber stamp. They have to prove their point to us, and we are listening to you as well. All right, so I realize you've sat here for a long time. I cannot thank you enough, because we appreciate your involvement in this. Your voice matters. And so thank you for that. We will continue this. Next, we do not need further.
Mr. Shammy, February 28th is the next meeting, so your witnesses are available that evening? You want to confirm?
I'm sorry?
Did you have a sign on your board? That's the 28th?
No, no, I'm gonna address that in a second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is February 28th good for you and your team?
I haven't conferred with...
It's the last day of the month. It's the last day of February.
Yeah. I'm fine with it, but I have to talk to my crew.
All right, so just to the members of the public, the next meeting on this application,